Right. We do one more minute. Doesn't work. She was working. Yeah. Jameson, okay. Everybody ready? All right. So the first thing we'll do is call the meeting to order. It is 3:34 PM. Karen, if you would, call the roll.
Chairman Warren Collin.
President.
Westy, William Proctor.
President.
Westy, Andy McKay.
President.
Westy, Brian Cobb.
President.
Westy, Drew Bash.
President.
We do have a quorum. The reason we are here today is in reference to the Port Orange Pension Fund intending to order, intending to enter an order terminating and forfeiting our rights, privileges, and benefits, to which he is or may be entitled in the fund pursuant to Section 112.3173 of the Florida statutes in Chapter 54, Article 5, Section 54 through 129 of the Ordinance Code of the City of Port Orange. Before we get started, a couple of housekeeping things. We might be a while, so back in the cooler. There's water on ice if anybody needs one. If you need to use the restrooms, they're immediately outside this door and to your left. Both men's and ladies are to your left. After 5:00 PM, if we're here after that, the front doors of the PD lock. So if you go outside, let me know so I can get you back in. Okay? This door will lock behind you, but if you have to go out, you can kick the foot down and it'll keep it from closing. Other than that, just a, just a couple of, none of us on the board are lawyers. We, we get that, and you guys are way ahead of us on the legal argument side. So please take it easy on this when you're making your arguments. Nobody here wants to have this here. This is not why we get on the board, but it is both a legal and moral duty that we have to have the hearing. So with that, Mr. Levinson, if you'd like to start.
So some housekeeping observations. I'm going to move a little bit closer so that we're recording here. The first observation is that ordinarily on these kind of a hearing, we would have an opening, and then I would do a closing, and in the middle would be whatever argument's going to be made from the respondent's attorney. So I would propose to start with an opening and then reserve time, if we will, for a closing or rebuttal. That, that's the first observation. Second observation is that in order to avoid a lengthy hearing that goes on through the night and into the next day with witnesses lined up, and this is the language I want to use in the record, in accordance with the agreement of counsel, both parties are here, the two parties and then the intervenor, but the, the parties have agreed that the depositions are being introduced in lieu of live testimony for expediency purposes. So the parties have agreed that we would be, instead of having testimony from other witnesses, we would be using the depositions and other records, which have all been stipulated to. So there is a stipulation. I want to thank, by the way, you know, on my learned counsel for the stipulations that are admitted into the record as evidence, and that saves us from having to call a parade of witnesses because the documents are admitted, and I will be making a motion in accordance with that agreement of the parties. And I can either do that now, or I can do it at the end, but to admit all of the documents pursuant to the agreement of the parties into evidence, and that makes it easier for us to refer to them by the number, which is in your materials, and I'm, I'm assuming that everyone has with them their, their set of documents, and that corresponds with the stipulation. And let's point out, go ahead.
If you would also say that stipulations have been revised, right, and all parties agree.
Well, thank you, Mr. Harrison. The third observation for housekeeping purposes, which the attorneys talked about before, is that it was brought to our attention that Exhibits 6 and 7 are really flipped. The descriptions are flipped, and it has to do with the, the video versus the transcript. So they're described inaccurately. One is the video, one is the transcript, but you just reverse them, 6 and 7, and then 8 and 9, same idea, the transcript versus the video, which we have for you, both the transcript and the video. So that's 8 and 9. And then the other quick housekeeping observation is that there was a date error on the stipulation. There was a date that referred to 2022, which obviously was incorrect. So it was 2021. So that has been corrected, and I think everybody received in their packages that corrected Page 3, including the attorney. So everyone will be referring to Page 3, which is the revised Page 3, which was only a change in the date.
Everybody have a copy of the page? It's not here. So just for the record, do both the other councils agree to what we asked to leave?
Well, the related question there is on just housekeeping. The documents are admitted into evidence. I made a motion. There was no objection.
Off the podium because of a recording device. Yeah. I, I was just going to ask you, did you make that motion?
So I, I made the motion that all of the exhibits, which have been stipulated to without objection by counsel, are admitted into the record. And of course, attorneys can argue whatever they want with regard to the meaning, the significance, the weight, et cetera, of records, but the documents are admitted into the record. That is the motion. Also, housekeeping. I'm not sure if you are going to be calling any witnesses today, but let me give a little bit of background about what happened with the hurricane. So thankfully, southeastern Florida did not take it nearly as bad as southwestern Florida, but we were planning on taking a deposition of the, of the, what's, what the respondent, that's the proper terminology, the respondent. So we were planning on taking a deposition, but because you didn't have cell service, you didn't have electricity, whatever the reasons were, it was agreed that I would be able to ask questions today. All the other depositions were already taken, and you have copies of those in the materials, which were just admitted into evidence. So I, I do deserve the right to ask some questions. I wasn't sure if you're going to ask questions on your own?
I am.
Okay, so it'll be cross-examination. So, so my question would be, it seems to make sense to me that I will do an opening, then they'll do whatever argument you want to do as a response, and then you could call your witness. I'll be able to cross-examine the witness, and then the closing. That's how I see it playing out.
That's great. Now we're going to proceed. So any questions of the board at this time? Just for the board, you do have three interested parties here. Mr. Levinson is basically moving the case forward. He'll be making presentations. This is in is the attorney, Mr. Ryan Shilvey. Mr. McKay is the attorney for the interviewer, Ken. So we'll hear arguments from all three. We've already taken into consideration the intervening. We've had a motion by the chair to allow the intervention. So that's where we're at. So we would now go forward unless you have questions at this point. We'll go forward. Mr. Levinson will begin. He will make an opening statement. That will start the hearing. Everybody ready? Questions? Okay, so if you would speak, all of you speak from the podium because the recording device is there. That's what we're going to need.
My name is Adam Levinson from the law firm of Klausner Kaufman Jensen Levinson. And as you know, we are the special counsel today, brought in for purposes of assisting the board with this forfeiture proceeding. I'm going to let the, for the court reporter know that I tend to speak a little quickly. Please slow me down if I speed up because I tend to do that, and I.
I promise you, as you well know, I will slow you down.
And that gets to one of the points, which is my job today is not just to explain the law to you and to explain the facts, but to make sure you understand it. So I welcome questions, and here I'm going to defer to the chair and to Ken. If you wanted to be able to ask attorneys while we're speaking, I would allow it, or if you want to wait until we finish, but I, I do welcome questions. So that's, that's a quick observation.
I have discussed it with the chairman, and I said that if you have a question during the presentation, ask it. Don't wait till the end. It's fresh in everybody's mind when the statement's made. So you can anticipate that if there are questions, they'll be asking you as you.
And I welcome questions, trustees, because often if you have a question, the person right next to you may have that same question. So it's, it's, it's healthy to the discussion, and my goal is to have an informed deliberative discussion. So now let me officially begin with the opening statement. So as was pointed out by the chair at the beginning of the meeting, when you signed up to be a trustee, it didn't necessarily sign up to do forfeitures. Maybe you signed up because you enjoyed investments. Maybe you signed up because the union thought this was be a good idea, or whatever other reason, but this, I presume is not the reason you signed up. But, and, and this is something I want you to possibly write down or file away in the back of your mind, because it's going to be a theme that I'm going to be going through. When the law is clear and the facts are established, when the law is clear and the facts are established, you are required, it is mandatory, to do a forfeiture when the law is clear and the facts are established. So what do I mean by that? And I'm going to describe to you what I'm going to go through. I'm going to give you a roadmap. But at the very outset, when the facts are clear and the law is established, what does that mean? That means in this case, when there was a no contest plea, and we're going to talk about what that means, when there's a no contest plea to a specified offense, and here it's two specified offenses. So when there's a no contest plea to two specified offenses, and those specified offenses are specified offenses because of what's called the catch-all provision, and we're going to be talking about the catch-all provision. So when you have specified offenses under the catch-all, and when you have a no-Lo plea to both of those offenses, you are required by law to do a forfeiture. We don't like doing it. It's not fun. It's not why you signed up, but your hands are tied when the law is clear and the facts are established. So what is the roadmap for going through this discussion today? So first, I'm going to talk about what the statutory provisions are. I'm going to talk about what the law is, and also there's a constitutional provision. And those are the three documents I gave you highlighted, which everybody has before the meeting today. So everybody can refer with me to see exactly what the law says to make sure we understand the law. I'll be going through those provisions. That's the first thing I'm going to do. The second thing I'm going to do is to key in on what the elements are. And for police officers, you know, there are elements of an offense. So we're going to be talking about what the elements are for the forfeiture statute under Chapter 112. We'll be going through the elements, and today, really, this is a nexus case. So I'm going to have to, because I have to admit, I have the burden of proof today. I have to prove to you that the facts are established, and the law is clear, and that there is a nexus. So I'm going to spend a fair amount of time walking through the evidence for why there is a nexus, a connection under the forfeiture statute. So I'm going to talk about the law and the constitution. I'm going to talk about the elements of the offense and how that leads to a forfeiture, which is the nexus argument. I'm going to talk about the facts. That's what we're talking about, the facts, and I'm going to apply the law to the facts. And that's the job of the lawyer, is to apply the law to the facts. And when you do that, the law is clear, facts are established, the statute is mandatory, you have no discretion, you have to do the forfeiture. So that's the overview of what we're going to be doing today. So let's start with the, let's start with the constitution. And you'll see it says at the top, F L C O N S T. That's an abbreviation for the Florida Constitution, and that's an abbreviation for Article 2, Section 8. So everyone should be able to pull out Article 2, Section 8 of the Florida Constitution. So we're starting at the very highest level of Florida law, the Florida Constitution. What does the Florida Constitution say? And I'll read that first sentence for you. "A public office is a public trust. The people shall have the right to secure and sustain that trust against abuse." The people shall have the right to secure and sustain that trust against abuse. And to assure that right, the Constitution, Article 2, Section 8, has a bunch of provisions. But the provision that we're here to discuss is Subparagraph D. So the public office, and when you're a police officer, you have a public office. That's a public trust. What does Paragraph D say? So the Florida Constitution describes and mandates that any public officer or employee who is convicted of a felony involving breach of public trust shall be subject to forfeiture, and it talks about public retirement systems. So if it's a private retirement system, an ERISA plan, or if it's any other kind of retirement system, that's not governed by the Florida Constitution. This applies to public retirement systems, which is what you are. So let me pause. Are there any questions? And I'll also point out to you that because of this constitutional provision, the Florida legislature, as you'll notice, it says at the end of Paragraph D, "as provided by law." So the Constitution speaks at a very high level. The Constitution gives the broad parameters, the broad brush strokes, subject to "as provided by law," and that's how we get into the actual statute. But are there any questions that anybody might have about what the Florida Constitution says, which is Article 2, Section 8? The next document, making sure that we all understand what your mandatory requirements are for forfeiture purposes, is the forfeiture statute, which is in Chapter 112, and it's 112.3173. So 112.3173 is the Florida statute, and I highlighted a couple of things for you. I'm not going to go through the entire statute, but I welcome questions. But the first thing some of you may ask is, well, this case involves a no-Lo plea. It does not involve, somebody might say, a conviction. There was no jury here. There was no jury trial. The judge didn't have a trial and then make a decision after a full tr- trial. So some of you may say, in order for the forfeiture statute to apply, there has to be a conviction, but this was a no-Lo case. So right up front, I want to explain to you what the definition of the term conviction is, and that's what I highlighted for you. So a conviction is defined as, and keep reading, A, and I think I highlighted it for everybody, a plea of no-Lo contendre. So although you may not, may not be logical, you may not necessarily come to that conclusion, the statute, this is the Florida legislature tells us what we have to do. The Florida legislature said that a no-Lo plea is a conviction. It's a definition in the statute, a no-Lo plea, and it does not matter what somebody thought when they were doing a no-Lo plea, because the statute doesn't care about what someone thought when they did a plea. What the statute says is that a plea of no contest is a conviction. Does everybody understand that? Now, the probably most important thing for people to understand today is the next section. So I'm going to speak slowly, and I want to make sure we all understand, is this is how you connect the dots. So there are several offenses, which are specified offenses under Paragraph E. So some of them in the statute are spelled out. They're enumerated. So for example, and we're not here under E1, E1 is embezzlement. Embezzlement of public offenses or embezzlement of public funds, that's a named specified offense, because the statute gives that this specific definition. Embezzlement, immediately, that is a specified offense. The reason we're here today is because of E6, and E6 takes a little bit of understanding to understand what E6 means. And we're going to read through E6, and this is what's referred to as a catch-all. And remember, at the beginning, I explained to you that here we have a no-Lo plea, and we have mandatory law. We have, the law is clear because of the plea, and we're dealing with a catch-all. So I want to explain to everybody what the catch-all means. So this is after E1 through 5, which are specified offenses that are enumerated. Now you get to E6, which is the broad catch-all, and it's not me calling it the catch-all. These are the cases, and I'm going to be walking you through today several cases that talk about how the nexus gets established. So what does the catch-all mean? So Paragraph 6 talks about in committing any felony, let me stop right there, any felony. So if it's a felony, you, you start with Paragraph 6, if it's a felony, but it's not enough that it could be a felony. So I'll give the example that if somebody, you know, steals from their neighbor, and it's not connected to their job, if there's no nexus, you know, if your, your neighbor leaves a door open and leaves their ring on the table, and you steal the ring from your neighbor, if there's no nexus, there's no connection to your job, you can get away from a forfeiture standpoint with what you do in your own time. But when that felony, which is what we're going to see, is connected to the job, when there is a nexus, that's what requires the forfeiture. So let's keep reading from Paragraph 6. "The committing of any felony by a public officer or employee," and I have to establish that the respondent was a public officer or employee, "willfully with the intent to defraud the public or the public agency," and I'm not arguing here necessarily that he was trying to defraud the public agency, "but he was violating the duty," which we will see. So it has to be willful, and we'll talk about what that means, "with the intent to defraud the public or the agency for which the public officer or employee acts," and again, I have the obligation of establishing, I think we all know where he works, "in which he or she is employed, of the right to receive the faithful performance of their duty as a public officer." So again, this is what the catch-all requires. "realizes or obtains or attempts to realize or obtain profit gain or advantage for himself or herself or some other person through the use or attempted use of the power, rights, privileges, duties of the position of their office or employment position." So that's the catch-all. In other words, in a nutshell, the catch-all says, and I just wrote it to you, but I have to establish a nexus between what they did, which is a violation of their duty to the public trust, and there's an intent requirement, willfully with the intent to defraud the public. Are there any questions about what the catch-all says? That is my obligation to connect the dots on the catch-all, and I'm going to give you examples of cases, and let me just give you a couple of examples right now. A lot of the cases involving police involve mail fraud, and you, you might notice that, number one, under E, mail fraud is not specifically mentioned. Other cases involve having child pornography on your work computer. That's not mentioned in the forfeiture statute, but these kind of offenses, mail fraud, or having child porn on your desk computer, or, and I'll give lots of examples later, even though they're not enumerated, these offenses fall under the catch-all. And I'll give names of famous cases involving the sheriff of Broward County, involving the Miami police chief. I'm sorry. I didn't even hear it ring. Sorry.
Everybody else.
If everybody muted your phone or put it on vibrations, please.
So I will be prepared to give you examples of cases, some of them very prominent people who were not convicted or did not plead guilty to a enumerated offense, but it fell under the specified offense. They went to jail. They lost their pensions. So does anyone have any questions about the catch-all, which is Paragraph 6? The next document that I handed out prior to the beginning of the hearing, and was also included in the filings by learned counsel, is the provisions of the plan. So this is Section 54-129, and this is the plan provisions. And what you're going to notice, and I highlighted it for you, is that they're not identical, but they're substantially similar. So let me explain how you translate the state statute, Chapter 112, into your pension, which is 54.129. So first of all, look at the definition of conviction, which is Paragraph D1A. I highlighted it for you. What does it say? It says a conviction, and I'm sort of skipping. I'm not going to read it all, but a conviction includes a plea of no, no-Lo contendre or no contest. So under the pension ordinance, which is intended to replicate the statute, if you plead no, if you plead no contest, that's the same thing as a conviction, and that's in your pension ordinance. Now, keep going down the page. I'm not going to read it all, but I want to talk about Paragraph C5 in your ordinance. And it's going to look very familiar, because I basically just read it to you, because where does it come from? It comes out of the state statute 112. So Paragraph C5 in your pension ordinance, so this is the pension plan, which is obligatory, the, the pension plan says, the committing of a felony. Now here it says a participant. So in the statute, it refers to public officer or employee, but in the pensions ordinance, it refers to participant. So really, the only difference between the pension ordinance and the statute is that the pension ordinance refers to them as a police officer or a participant, but it's substantially the same language. And I'm going to point out to you, as some of you may know, our office represents pension plans all over the state of Florida. In fact, all over the country, from California to the Midwest and the Northeast, we represent pension plans. That's what we do. And the point I wanted to make is that many of our plans in Florida don't have forfeiture provisions inside the pension plan. They just travel under the state statute, and let me explain that for a second. So a lot of our plans, you don't even have to have the language in your ordinance. You wouldn't even need to have a 54.129, because state law always trumps and gets read into city law, if that makes sense, in the hierarchy of law. Remember, the constitution's at the top, then you have state law, and then you have municipal law. So the forfeiture statute, whether or not you had it in your pension plan, is still always operative. But to the credit of your attorneys, they try to make it easier for you by building it into your pension plan. Does everybody follow that? So when I refer to the forfeiture statute, I'm, I'm referring both to Chapter 112.3173 and your pension ordinance, 54.129, because they were intended to work together. They do the same thing, right? And also, I want you to look at the verbiage that's used. And I'm not going to read all of it to you, but it's a mandatory requirement, that if the established, if, if the facts are established, and if the law is clear, if nexus is established, it's mandatory, it's obligatory. It's not a may. It's not a may or may not. It's not I have discretion. You have no choice but to forfeit when the law is clear and the facts are established. Are there any questions about either of the three legal documents that I just passed out? It's also important, trustees, for me to walk you through the underlying offenses. And let me talk to you, and it's in your materials. It was all stipulated to, but there were two crimes that were charged, and that's the, the two crimes where you had the no contest plea. And I want to make sure everybody understands what those two offenses are, because they're not necessarily the kind of offenses that you hear on Law &amp; Order, actually, for you, your police. So these are not necessarily the kind of cases that you, you see every day. So they're not famous cases, in other words, and they're not necessarily obvious. So I want to make sure you understand the two offenses. So I did not make copies of them for you, but I am going to read for you the two offenses, and they are referenced in Exhibits, which we'll be going through. So the first offense, where there was a no contest plea, is Section 831.02, 831.02 Florida statutes. And that offense is called uttering forged instruments. Uttering forged instruments. What does 831.02 say? And I'll read it. Whoever utters and publishes as true a false forged or altered record, deed, instrument, or other writing, mentioned in Section 831, knowing the same to be false. So it's not enough. If I, if I had a false document and I passed it on, it's not enough if I pass on a false document. I could give examples, but it's not enough if I just pass on. That's not uttering. What uttering specifically requires, it has a specific intent requirement. So let me read it again. Whoever utters and publishes as true a false forged or altered record, deed, or instrument, et cetera, et cetera, knowing the same to be false, altered, forged, or counterfeited, with intent to injure or defraud any person, shall be guilty of a felony of the third degree punishable by. So what's the point? The point is that uttering, it's not enough that you're passing on or innocently passing on a false document, but if you pass on a false document, even if you're not the one who falsified it, but if you pass on a false document, knowing the same to be fit, knowing the same to be false, with intent to injure or defraud any person, is guilty of this offense. So I want to make sure everybody understands what the first plea was to, 831.02, uttering forged instruments. Are there any questions about that offense? And trustees, I think you understand where I'm heading, that when you do a no, no contest or no-Lo plea to an offense, you are agreeing that each of the elements of that offense have been stipulated to. When a judge takes a plea, the judge walks you through the plea colloquy. The judge has to be confident that you're agreeing that you committed that offense. That's the no contest plea. So we're going to be going through evidence for that, which is in your record, and it's the charging document, which is the indictment. You're going to see that statute referenced, and you're going to see it referenced in other documents that have already been admitted into evidence. So before I move on from 831.02, are there any questions about what uttering means, and the fact that in order to be convicted, you have to know that the document was false, and when you utter it, when you pass it along, you're doing that with intent to defraud a person? Are there any questions about that? The next offense is Section 825.103. And again, I'm not going to give you a copy of it. We're trying to save some paper, but I'm going to summarize for you what the second offense to which the respondent pled no-Lo, no contest, to 825.103. And by the way, both of these are felonies, 831.02 and 825.103. So what is 825.103? 825.103 is called exploitation of an elderly person or disabled adult. Exploitation of an elderly person or disabled adult. It's a, it's a very detailed statute. I'm just going to read to you relevant provisions. So it has a definition of what does that mean, exploitation of an elderly person or disabled adult, and Paragraph 18 describes that exploitation means the following. Knowingly, and that's important, because there's an intent requirement in the statute. So exploitation is defined as knowingly obtaining or using or endeavoring to obtain or use an elderly person's or disabled adult's funds, assets, or property with the intent to temporarily or permanently. to temporarily or permanently deprive the elderly person, and it goes on, of the benefit of those funds. So let me take a step back, it's important that everybody understand this, and I welcome questions. There's an intent requirement in the statute, eight twenty-five one oh three. Exploitation is not just stealing money from an old person. If an old person, you know, their wallet is hanging out of their pocket, you take their wallet, you've stolen property from them, but you have not exploited them under eight twenty-three one oh three. Because eight twenty-three one oh three requires knowingly obtaining from the person, the elderly or disabled person, with the intent to temporarily or permanently deprive the elderly person or disabled person of the benefit of property, and then it goes on. And it says that if you stand in a position of trust or confidence vis-à-vis the elderly person, or you have a business relationship with them. So if you just steal from an elderly person in front of a seven eleven, you don't have a fiduciary position with them of trust and competence or a business relationship. So what this statute, the exploitation statute says, is if you are in a position of trust, almost if you're a trustee, or a position where you can take advantage of them, and you use that position to disadvantage of them and benefit yourself, that's what triggers the exploitation statute. And I want to make sure everybody understands that the statute has a, has an intent requirement that you knowingly obtained their property with the intent to temporarily or permanently deprive them of that property, even if it's only temporary, permanently or temporarily deprive them of that property. And if you stand in a position of trust or confidence, or had a close business relationship with that person, and why do I keep stressing the statute? Because this is the statute where you had a no contest plea. The judge took this as admitted, and by definition, when you plead no contest, you are admitting, you are not contesting the facts, and then when you plea at the plea colloquy, which is in your, in your notebooks, those facts are as a matter of law taken as true. Are there any questions about what the statute eight twenty-five one oh three, the exploitation Let me walk you through what happened on October fourteenth. October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, the respondent pled no contest to one first degree felony of exploitation of an elderly person under eight twenty-five one oh three three A, and one felony count of uttering under eight thirty-one oh two, in case number nineteen dash three oh five, six four nine CFDB, in the seventeenth judicial circuit in Volusia County. That was on October fourteenth, and in the materials, it's a copy of that plea colloquy. On November thirtieth, so a little bit more than a month later, the original plea, which was to a first degree felony, was vacated, and a no low contest plea to second degree felony exploitation was entered, under eight twenty-five one oh three three A. Let me explain what that means. So you had the initial plea on October fourteenth to a first degree felony, but then, on November thirtieth, the original plea was vacated, taken out, and instead, you had a plea to second degree felony. But the same offense, the only thing that changed was the dollar amount. So under the statute, if the dollar amount of the exploitation is, and here, I have to double check, it's the exploitation or the uttering, and I'll double check, but there's a dollar amount. If the dollar amount is fifty thousand or more, then it's the first degree felony. If it's between forty-nine thousand and a lower dollar, and I'll double check, then it's second degree, and then if it's a very low dollar amount, then it's a third. So the point that I wanted to make is that, yes, the original plea was vacated, which was the first degree felony, but it was replaced with a no low plea of a second degree felony. So let's take a look at the forfeiture statute.
You just said it for a second, which is it?
Let me read my notes here. On November thirtieth, thank you for the clarification, Braddock's original plea to first degree felony was vacated, and a no low contendry plea to second degree felony exploitation was entered. So it was a first degree felony, it went to a second degree felony on the exploitation, which is eight twenty-five one oh three. And the takeaway point I wanted to make is that forfeiture statute doesn't care if it's a first degree felony, second degree felony, or third degree felony. And I want you to look at me, look at it with me. Look at E six, because we read it together. E six, which is the felony statute or the forfeiture statute, says that committing of any felony, it doesn't distinguish between first degree, second degree, third degree, any felony that triggers that language in E six, which establishes the nexus with intent to defraud the public, and that's what I'm referring to as the nexus under six. So it doesn't matter if it's first degree, second degree, or third degree, but at the end of the day, of the two offenses that we're talking about, one was a first degree felony with a no low, the second was a second degree felony with a no low, both are felonies. And I want to make sure everybody understands that. So let me walk you through the elements. I promised you we would do the law, I promised you I would try to walk you through some of the documents, let me walk you through the elements of a forfeiture. And this is what the forfeiture cases, and just so everybody knows, when a case goes to trial, you have a judge or a jury, and there's a judgment that's entered, and then that can be appealed. And when a case gets appealed, and I used to work, by the way, my first job out of law school, was with a chief judge writing legal opinions. And that's what the appellate courts do, is they write legal opinions. And some of you may have had a chance to look at some of these legal opinions in cases, and I'm going to be referring to some of them by their names, the Jacobo case, and learned counsel license stuff, we'll also be referring to the Warshaw case, or some of these other cases. So when I say cases, I'm talking about after a case goes to trial, and there's an appeal, the panel of appellate judges writes an opinion. And in Florida, you always have the right to appeal, as people would have the right today, to appeal, and the cases we're talking about are forfeiture cases that were appealed from a pension board, they went up on appeal, and then on that appeal, the court affirmed or reverses it, that's what I'm talking about with forfeiture cases. So these forfeiture cases, appellate decisions, walk us through what the elements are, and what the elements, importantly, the catch-all. And that's my main job, as I see it today, is to make sure you connect and understand the application of the catch-all. So let me read you what the elements are, which are discussed in many of these cases or reported decisions. So in order to constitute a specified offense, because that's what we're talking about, a specified offense under the catch-all, so let me read it to you. In order to constitute a specified offense under section one twelve, three one seven three, to E six, and you can see where that's coming from, the criminal acts must be A, a felony. So I have to establish it was a felony. B, committed by a public employee, that's the second element, B, committed by a public employee. C, done willfully with intent to defraud the public of the employee or public employers of the right to receive the faithful performance of the employee's duty, so that's the third one, C, done willfully with intent to defraud the public of the employee's, public employer of the right to receive faithful performance of the employer's duty, that's the third one, C. D, done to obtain a profit, gain, or advantage for the employee or some other person, so that's D or the fourth prong, the fourth element, and the fifth element, E, done through the use or attempted use of the power, rights, privileges, duties, or position of appellant's employment. So that's the Balone case, and there are others that walk you through those five elements, those five requirements, the building blocks to establish a specified offense. Now, an argument is made in the papers, that if you look at your pension ordinance, and I'm going to summarize the argument that you would have heard from opposing counsel. So opposing counsel says that our pension ordinance lists certain offenses, which I refer to as, as enumerated offenses. So the pension statute says bribery, it says embezzlement, it says felonious theft. So learned counsel is arguing, and that's their job to make arguments, that the pension statute doesn't refer to Levinson, nowhere does the pension ordinance specifically mention the offenses that we have today, which are, so everybody is clear, uttering a forged instrument and exploiting an elderly person. It's true, the statute does not specifically enumerate those offenses, but there is a, I won't say unlimited, but there are hundreds of offenses that could be specified offenses, as long as those requirements of nexus, where you, and I'm just going to read it to you, the nexus requirements, where we willfully with intent to defraud the public and the public agency of your, the duty for which you're employed, the faithful performance of your duty, and you get a gain, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the nexus requirements. So literally, there could be hundreds of specified offenses, and this is what the cases say, I'm going to quote to the Jacobo case. Jacobo says that a specified offense doesn't have underlying criminal elements, a specified offense, because that's what you have to do, if there's a specified offense, you have to forfeit. A specified offense is based upon the conduct and the facts of the case. So a specified offense is based upon the conduct and the facts of a case, not by the name of the offense. Does everybody follow that? So you will not find the hundreds of possible felonies that constitute specified offenses all enumerated in the statute, because they fall under the catch-all, as long as it involves the nexus, a connection to the job. So let me give some examples of some of these cases. Some of the cases that were referred to in the papers is the Jenny case. What happened in Jenny? Jenny was the, the, for a long time, he was the sheriff in Broward County, where I'm from. So Sheriff Jenny pled guilty, or pled no low plea, sorry, a no low plea to, and you know what I mean, double check, I have to double check, I'm not sure if it was a no low, or if it was a guilty plea, it doesn't matter, because under the statute, the plea is the same thing as a no low. So Jenny pleads to conspiracy to commit mail fraud, and remember, mail fraud is not listed, you're not going to see the name mail fraud in your pension ordinance, but you do have the catch-all. So Jenny pleads to conspiracy to commit mail fraud, and what was Jenny doing? Jenny was getting favors from companies that are working for the sheriff's office. This is one of the biggest sheriff offices in the country, Miami and Broward are enormous sheriff's offices, he's getting favors from developers, which is federal mail fraud. What happens? They forfeit his pension, he tries to make all kinds of arguments that, no, this isn't specified, he loses because it fell under the catch-all. And what was the nexus? The nexus was, he was the sheriff, and the reason why they're giving him favors is because he was the sheriff, that's the nexus. Let me give you some other cases, Warshaw, this is the police chief, or many, many, in fact, you were probably under Warshaw.
He actually worked for me at one point.
So Donald Warshaw, who served over a year, or approximately a year, probably a year and a day in jail, was the police chief of Miami. So what happens to Warshaw? Same idea, he has one count of mail fraud, and the facts of this case are very important to understand. There was an organization, which you will not believe how ironic it was, called Do the Right Thing, it was a private charity, the Do the Right Thing charity. And by virtue of being the police chief, he had a position on that charity, because that charity was intended to help officers and help the community and help crime victims. So it was the Do the Right Thing charity. So he's helping himself to the money, he's defrauding the Do the Right Thing charity, and he makes an argument. The argument that Warshaw makes is that there's no nexus here, because it's a private charity. So you can't connect me and my duty as the police chief to a private charity, because it's private, it's not public. That was the argument that Donald Warshaw made, and he lost that case, why? Because there just has to be a nexus, it doesn't have to be, you know, the most beautiful nexus, there can be private aspects of that nexus, but as long as there is a nexus, and what was the nexus? The nexus, according to the court, was that he gained access to those funds, even though they were private funds, through his job. If he were not police chief, he would not have had access to the funds of the Do the Right Thing charity, that was sufficient for the nexus. Because of his position as police chief, he gained access to those funds, so even though he stole it from a private charity, nexus established, he was convicted, and he forfeits the entire pension. And that's a police chief who did a, I don't know how many years that career was, so, I'm sorry?
Very long.
Right, so, you know, that's an example of a, I'll be careful describing it, but that's a big forfeiture, when a high-ranking, long-term chief loses a pension. Let me give you some more examples, DeSoto. I'm trying to make sure we all understand how the nexus works under paragraph E six in the Florida statute, which is the same as D five, D one five in your pension ordinance, the catch-all. So I'm walking you through catch-all cases, because I'm going to apply the facts of our case to the facts of how these catch-all cases work. What happens in the DeSoto case? DeSoto is a police officer in Hialeah, he's involved with a conspiracy to distribute cocaine, he's ripping off drug dealers, same idea, he's brought forward on a, on a catch-all case, right? And you have to show that there's a connection to his job, that's the catch-all. So he admitted, for purposes of his plea, that he identified himself as a police officer, and he gave handcuffs to the other bad guys that are his conspirators. So the nexus was, he says he was a police officer, and he's using police officer equipment to commit the offense. So even though he's doing it off duty, and in some of these cases, the police officers who are being, having their benefits forfeited, are on administrative leave. In some of these cases, it's a police officer who's no longer allowed to work, who's committing a crime while they're on leave. So they're not technically a police officer, if you could debate about that, when they're on leave, but they're doing this in their private capacity, but there is a connection to the job. And that's why you forfeit the pension, because there is that nexus, that connection. In the case of DeSoto, it was the handcuffs. In the case of Warshaw, he gained access because he was the chief. Let me give you some more examples real quick. Newman's, this is a case, again, with drug traffickers, and you don't see drugs mentioned anywhere in the statute, but it falls under the catch-all. So what is the Newman's case? Newman's involves a police officer is giving tip-offs to the bad guys, he's letting them know of where they should go, and sharing information with them, he's also sharing his expertise, that when you have the drug convoys, this is what you have to be out, to look out for. So the point is, what was the nexus in Newman's? The nexus was the tip-offs, the expertise made the connection, even though he's doing it on his own time, he's doing it outside of work, it's connected to the job, because it's police information that's being shared with the bad guys. A couple more. There's going to be an argument that you're going to hear, because it's in your papers, and this is the Jacobo case, that what does personal gain mean for purposes of the forfeiture statute? And I want to give the Jacobo case as an example, this is an officer who, there was a police shooting, Hialeah, and as it turns out, after the shooting, the person who was shot, the victim, did not have a gun, but they thought, and they may have reasonably thought he had a gun, who knows? Maybe they thought they saw, you know, a telephone or whatever else, but they thought there was a gun, but there was no gun. So another officer carried a throw-down, this is apparently how it used to work back in the day there, and lo and behold, the throw-down gun is found, and the arrest record, the arrest report indicates that a throw-down weapon, doesn't say a throw-down, but they found a weapon. And obviously, it was not the victims, the person who was shot, it was a victim, it was a weapon of one of the other officers. So what did Jacobo do? Jacobo didn't throw down the gun, Jacobo didn't shoot the victim, Jacobo lied about it in a police report. That's a specified offense, and it's easy to see why that's a specified offense, because he lied in a public document. But I wanted to mention Jacobo to you, because in the Jacobo case, what's happening, there's no personal gain, he's not getting a, well, I shouldn't say personal, there's no financial gain, he's not getting any money, which we're going to be talking about today, the volume of money that's in play, and what that means under the statute. But in Jacobo's case, it was not a financial gain, but it was still a personal gain, because he's getting a favor from the other officers. And you can't operate in a world where police carry throw-down weapons, and the courts take these cases very seriously. And that's another point I wanted to make, which is these forfeiture cases, they are not fun, this is not why you signed up to do it, but it comes from the Constitution, and it's, what the judges emphasize in these cases, is that a police officer, and one of the exhibits I'm going to walk through today, is the oath of office. When a police officer takes that job, it's under that public trust and that oath of office, which the courts take very seriously, and the Florida legislature takes very seriously, and the Florida Constitution takes very seriously, which is why these are mandatory forfeiture requirements, as long as the law is clear and the facts are established. So let me give you some general employee examples, which will make it even easier. So the Quenka case, this was a Dade County, Miami Dade County basketball coach, and he does not plead, even though it's sexual battery, and sexual battery against a minor is mentioned in the statute, but he doesn't plead, he doesn't want to agree to a, a sex offense. So he refuses to plead to, if you want to ask me, I can give you the lore details, but involves young boys and the basketball coach who wants to see their private parts. So he does not plead to sexual battery, he just pleads to a regular battery. What is a battery? That's an unwanted touching. So he just pleads to a battery. So the question is whether or not Quenka can forfeit, or whether or not we're going to forfeit his benefit, when he just pleads to a battery. What do you think happens? And I wouldn't be mentioning the case unless it's pretty obvious. So in the Quenka case, the nexus, the reason why you forfeit the pension was because of the catch-all, because battery is not listed as a specified offense, an enumerated offense, it comes under the catch-all. So Quenka, he met his students through the job, in other words, it was the basketball that was the instrumentality of why you did the forfeiture, why you had the nexus. And the last one is Balone, which was cited by learned counsel, and Balone, what happens? This is child porn on a computer. If you do child porn on your own computer at home, that's probably not a forfeitable offense, but when you're using the work computer to download the child porn on a work computer assigned to you, which is only your computer, bingo, forfeitable offense, because of the nexus, you violated your public duty by using public property, by using public property to commit an offense, that's what happened to Balone, and that's why there was a nexus of using a work computer. Are there any questions about some of these cases? Trustees, I'm going to read you some record sites, and I'm going to do it relatively quick, it's already in the record, but for purposes of establishing the appeal, if there is an appeal, I want it to be very clear in the record, some of the documents, so I'm connecting the dots for everybody. And feel free to stop me at any time, and I'm not doing exhibits in order, but I'll also be discussing the exhibits when we do some of the testimony. And all these exhibits were already entered into evidence. So on the nexus facts, is what I'm calling them, Solana was the note- So on the nexus facts, is what I'm calling them, Solana was the notary, and some of you may know Solana. So she's a notary, and Solana uses her notary stamp at her desk to notarize the documents that are uttered. So the fact that she was employed by the police department is exhibit 20, her deposition, page 7. Exhibit 13 is her payslip, which by the way, gives her salary at the time she's notarizing the documents, on page 1 of exhibit 13. The Internal Affairs Report, which goes into great detail with interviews with Solana, is exhibit 12. Page 2 establishes that she's with Department of Personnel, that she's an employee, and that her job is records clerk. Exhibit 20 of her deposition establishes that she is a notary for the police department, and part of her responsibilities as the record clerk is to do notarization. Exhibit 12 is the Internal Affairs Report, that the documents were notarized at the police department. Exhibit 20, her deposition, page 10, she notarized these documents, the adorable power of attorney, when she was on duty at her desk. Exhibit 20, page 10, again, the notarization of the DPOA, the power of attorney, the adorable power of attorney, occurred on duty at Solana's desk in this building. In fact, I don't know if it's a building, but it's the police department, presumably it was this building. Page 10 of Solana's deposition, she keeps a notary stamp at her desk. The notarization of the warranty deed was also done on duty, that's page 13, at Solana's desk. That is your nexus, trustees, just as the basketball in the... In the Quenka case, just as the knowledge, the tip-offs, in the Newman's case, the nexus in this case is Solana's desk, Solana's notary seal, and the fact that Solana was being asked to do the notarization. And let me connect more dots for you, and I'm going to walk you through more record sites. Had the respondent taken these documents just to a bank and had them notarized, we may not be here today. Now, that case may have different facts to it, but we're here today with a case where the notarization did occur. And some of you may say, so what? Some of you may say, this is just, you know, a notarization of two documents, or we're here because notarization of two documents. Some of you may say, what's the big deal? And the answer is, that had someone brought documents to be notarized to a bank, a notary who was doing their job, who wasn't effectively being asked to do something by a superior officer, who they report to or might report to, a notary is required to do a couple things, and I'm going to refer you now to the notary statute. They're not in your materials, but I'm going to refer you to them for the record. So what does the notary statute say? This is section 117.107. 117.107 provides that a notary may not notarize a signature if it appears the person is mentally incapable of understanding the effect and nature of a document. So if the mother, with all due respect, who was in an assisted living facility, and we'll talk about what the Internal Affairs Investigation showed, but if the mother is not mentally competent and capable of signing something, a notary can't notarize it. That's 117.107.5. The notary statute, 117.107.9, requires the person whose signature is being notarized be present. And what you're going to see from the deposition transcripts and from testimony today is that when these documents were notarized, the only people at the desk, when that city of Port Orange notary seal was used, paid for by the city, the only people in the room were the respondent and the city's notary, Solana. The two witnesses, who were effectively supposed to be agreeing to these documents, were not present. So what is the point? The point is that had, in theory, someone gone to another outside notary, the outside notary would have wanted to make sure that the person who was signing a document is capable, because that's what the notary statute says, and they would have had to be physically present, but they weren't. So this is not just a notarization case, this is a notarization case done in an unlawful way, and I'll also point out to you that it's a felony under the notarization statute to do what occurred, which is a false or fraudulent acknowledgement, is a third-degree felony in and of itself. So let me get back to some more of the record sites, and I'll try to do this quickly. Exhibit 14 is the invoice for Solana's notary documentation and fees, and that's for the shipping, the costs, et cetera, and the bond to be a notary. And exhibit 15 is the invoice for Solana, so the city paid for Solana's notary materials. And you'll see that exhibit 15, it's the same $103, which is the city paying the cost of this notarization materials, the stamp, et cetera. That Solana was on duty, that's exhibit 20, the Solana deposition. Emphasizing, page 10, it was done on duty at her desk for both of the documents that we'll be talking about. Another connection from the Solana deposition is exhibit 20, page 9, that Solana knows Braddock because he was a sergeant. And that's another thread that you see in some of these notarizations, in some of these forfeiture cases, that when a police officer meets someone through their job, that can establish a nexus. So here, Solana testified she knows Braddock because of her work, he was a sergeant, and that's how they met, was through the job. But even if they hadn't met through the job, they used the instrumentalities of the office, of the notary seal on the notary process. And again, it was no coincidence that the respondent selected a notary who would assign whatever he wanted, rather than taking it to an independent third-party notary who's going to comply with the notary statute. Are there any questions on the nexus in this case? Just to summarize, Solana was employed by the city, the documents were notarized at the city, in the police station, at her desk, with her notarization stamp paid for by the city. She was on duty, and she did not charge the $5 for the notarization. All in the record, Solana's official duties were record clerk. So she was being asked to violate her official duties, again, that's a nexus, that's a job connection, as the records clerk. And there's another obligation that I will get to, which is under your PP&amp;D, is what I call them. But your... Policy and Procedure directives, your PP&amp;D, and it's PP&amp;D So PP&amp;D 26.1.139 requires, as an obligation that a police officer has in Port Orange, to report a crime if it's committed by another officer. So you have a duty as a police officer in your own PP&amp;Ds, not to commit felonies, but to report felonies, which is yet another connection or nexus, which some of these cases establish, that when a police officer violates their duty of oath, their oath of office, that is an independent basis for a nexus. I will save the rest of my time for rebuttal, and there will be additional documents I'll be discussing as part of the examination of the witness. Are there any questions before I conclude the opening statement?
Any questions from the board? Thank you. Listen.
Give me a second to unpack.
All right. You've just heard quite a bit of information, so I'm not going to belabor too many of the points, but I would like to make a few points of my own, and of course, a few corrections. Specifically, with regards to the statute 112.3173, as codified as well by the city code. We've been discussing the paragraph 6 ad nauseam, in fact. I'd like to point out that we actually, we need to not only look at the portions of the statute as they're written individually, but you have to read to the bottom of the page, you have to read completely the entire paragraph specifically. It states, "The committing of any felony by a public officer or employee who willfully and with the intent to defraud the public or public agency for which the public officer or employee acts, or in which he's employed, or the right to receive favorable performance of his duties," and so on and so forth. The nexus here, you have to demonstrate that there was a willful and intentional violation. Furthermore, in the Warsaw case, which again, I believe you have in your materials, and in any event, I believe both parties reference it in their memorandums, it's worth noting that to the extent that there's any doubt about whether the crime is a statutorily specified offense, that doubt must be resolved in favor of the public employee subject to the forfeiture. It is stated in the case law, and again, written into my memorandum, as well as the case cited by opposing counsel here. I would also like to point out that the specified offenses for which you've received examples, the child pornography case, the drug smuggling case, in each of those individual cases, those are both very clearly an intent to defraud the public or the agency, they're using a badge and a uniform to assist in drug smuggling activity. There are very distinct differences here. In fact, my client did not use his position as a Port Orange police officer to have the notarial documents ratified. Anyone can walk through the front door of the Port Orange Police Department and request notarial services. In fact, that was testified to in both Lieutenant Akin's testimony, as well as Ms. Solana's testimony, that that doesn't have anything to do with his position. There's no specific key card to get into the building, there's no specific request or specific way of requesting the notarial services. Notwithstanding the fact that he did know Ms. Solana through work, they had a relationship outside of work as well. And again, he didn't use his position to force her to notarize anything. She was ultimately the notary, she was the person that took the course, she was the person that was aware of the notarial statute. My client had no reason to review the statute or take the four-hour course necessary to become a notary, and he was unfamiliar with the statute as it was. His question to her was, can you notarize this document? And her answer evidently and obviously was yes. My client was unaware, and therefore, did not have the willful or intentional portion that you would have to find in order to have him forfeit his pension as a result. It's also worth noting that the specified offenses, again, drug smuggling, child pornography, child pornography, I would say, probably falls under subsection 7, crime against a victim younger than 16 years of age, that again, is a specified offense. Drug smuggling is, using a badge to assist in drug smuggling is very obviously a specified offense by way of the catch-all statute. Here, we do not have the same willful and intentional behavior that would give rise to what we are calling the nexus here in this case. There was no, there was no intention to defraud, there was no willful anything. My client was unaware of the fact that he, that perhaps the notary stamp shouldn't have been used. My client was unaware of the fact that maybe the document shouldn't have been notarized. He is not familiar with that statute, that's not something he used on the job every day. And as a police officer, it's not necessarily something that you would know. He simply asked the question, can you notarize this document? And Ms. Solana proceeded to notarize the document. He was unaware that the document was technically defective on its face, because signatures were notarized while the individuals were not present. Worth noting, the document was not forged, the signatures were obtained. My client brought to the police department the document and asked if it could be notarized. The signatures were the original signatures of both of his parents. They were not forged by him or anyone else for that matter. So therefore, he brought a document that was signed by his parents to the Port Orange Police Department and asked, can you notarize this? The document was not invalid because the signatures were not that of his parents. The document was not invalid because the signatures were invented or somehow scribbled through or anything like that. The document was invalid simply because the notary decided she would notarize something without telling him or explaining to him, I can't notarize this because these individuals are not standing here before me today. My client believed that he had a valid document, as he had it notarized, it was signed by everybody. He was unaware that the document would be deemed invalid, when he passed it off to the bank as if it were a valid document. In his mind, it was, he had a notary, notarized a signature, he had the signatures of both of his parents. He had everything, he checked all the boxes, the document was prepared, it was properly signed, then it was notarized, unfortunately, not in the right order, and unfortunately, not all at the same time. But my client didn't know that that would make the document invalid. Therefore, I think that you'll find that the willful and intention to defraud the public or the public agency is not present in this case. I'll go ahead and allow Ms. McCabe to make some argument here, I'd like to take testimony. Sure, okay. I know, we're looking to take this.
I'm not a police officer, I'm not an attorney.
Sure.
And so, in looking at the pension ordinance, that part isn't in there about the willful public trust, about committing of any felony by a participant. Okay, you said he didn't know, and I don't know what he was thinking or whatever, but they weren't present, he's a sergeant, he's a police officer, a career police officer. He should have known that the parties had to be present to notarize a document.
Why should he have known that?
I know.
Because you know it, he should know it?
I would expect a career police officer to know that the parties have to be present, signing a document.
And I understand that expectation, but just because you know it, doesn't mean that he should know it.
We clear that, but he pled no-lo, no contest to uttering a forged instrument.
To that end, it's worth noting that the actual definition of pleading no contest is that they're accepting the plea but does not admit guilt. He accepted that he was being charged with the two offenses that were stated, it does not admit guilt. And in fact, adjudication was withheld. Does that answer your question?
Might not quite have done. The issue with that, though, is the Nolo for purposes of pension revocation is the same as a conviction.
I understand what you're saying. Again, worth noting that actually pleading no contest is not admitting guilt. But I understand what you're saying.
Right, so for us, whether it means guilt or not, the plea of no-lo, statutorily, we're required to take it as a conviction, unfortunately.
But it wasn't a specified offense.
Okay. Any felony. Right, the argument is that the specified offense is six, which is any felony, I think is the argument there.
Well, the argument is that the specified offense is six, but you, I don't think that you can find willful or intentional conduct, which is required under subsection six.
I would agree with that in the using of the notary. But in the overall sense, I don't know that you can, if he didn't have willful, I'm sorry, willful and intentional in the use of the notary, doesn't mean he can't have willful and intentional intent to defraud overall, and that's what we have to look at. You can't just remove the willful and intentional and apply it only to the use of the notary, right? It's the overall, and the Nolo says, for pension purposes, I did.
And I understand what you're saying, but with the specified offense, it must be demonstrated that it is willful and intentional, and that having been said, because the overall, I understand you're saying the overall offense is, if he didn't know that he didn't have an invalid power of attorney, how could he have possibly willfully or intentionally?
Well, that's exactly what he said to the judge when he pled no, that he understood the facts, that he, when he pled no. As far as the pension is concerned, that's the same as a conviction. He said to the judge, I know what the facts are that I am charged with, and I accept those facts. Right, those facts are now a matter of record. Right, those facts are now a matter of record.
I understand your position.
Right, and.
Is that a question?
I want to hear more, I really do.
And like I said, I do intend to elicit testimony for my client as well. I just wanted to go ahead and give Ms. McCabe the opportunity to make opening arguments as well. Are there any other questions I can answer? Yes, please.
Just referring to the uttering of the forged document on that. First degree, the elderly.
The exploitation of the elderly was with regards to the document and the usage of the document.
There were two first degree felony.
No.
I'm sorry, a first degree and a second degree, sorry.
Right, so the uttering of the forged document and then the exploitation of the elderly. The exploitation of the elderly, that charge stems from the use of the document. Does that answer your question? Okay. Are there any other questions I can answer?
One more, and I'm not sure that you can answer this, but in the deposition of Solana, she says, you know, I noticed his dad's information was, and I'll quote, after I saw the paperwork, I noticed his dad's information was on there, which I thought was odd because his dad had already passed away when I signed up on the paperwork. And I knew that from personal, you-know-knowledge. And I knew that from personal, you-know-knowledge, end quote.
The death certificate of the father is included as one of your exhibits. I think that you'll find that that actually was inaccurate. That statement was inaccurate.
Solana's statement was.
Correct, correct. And again, I believe it's exhibit two is the death certificate. So one or two, I can't recall off the top of my head. Yes, it's two, I believe. The deed is document one and it is dated March. So the passing in April occurred after. You're welcome. Any other questions I can answer?
How long from the time his father signed the document until he got it notarized?
If you'd like, I'll elicit that in testimony. I don't, I wasn't there.
Okay, I didn't know.
I can certainly elicit that during testimony to ensure that your questions are properly answered. Are there any other questions I can answer right now?
We'll now hear from Ms. McCabe. She's representing the ex-spouse in this matter as the interpleader.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the board's consent in letting us participate in these proceedings. And we're sort of trying to fly under the radar here. Obviously, we support Ms. Sin's contention that the pension should not be forfeited. And the reason we really care is because my client used to be married to Mr. Braddock and they were divorced in 2015, July of 2015. And as a provision in the final judgment for property distribution, my client was awarded a 25% interest in the pension. And so if Mr. Braddock loses his pension, allegedly Ms. Braddock is going to lose her 25% share. So the reason we think that she shouldn't lose her interest in that pension is because we think the case law is pretty clear about what happens when a portion of a pension is awarded to a party during a divorce. And I cited several cases in my motion. And presumably, the board has a copy of the final judgment, which as I said, was entered July 30th, 2015. And several cases, the first of which is a case called Atkins v. Atkins. And this case is out of the first DCA in Florida. The Atkins case stands for a proposition that husband and wife were divorced. Wife had an obligation to pay the husband part of her retirement benefits. And so she filed for divorce, or I beg your pardon. After the divorce, she filed for bankruptcy. And she asked the court to discharge her obligation to pay her former husband because it should be a debt that was discharged in bankruptcy. And the court in Atkins v. Atkins held that the husband's interest in one half of the former wife's pension was his sole and separate property and therefore was not subject to bankruptcy. So hang on to that thought for a minute because you might be thinking, well, why do we care about what happens in bankruptcy? And I'll try to explain that to you. We cited another case called DeSantis v. DeSantis. And this is a 1998 case out of the Fourth District Court of Appeals in Florida. And in that case, the court held that once the final judgment of dissolution of marriage was entered, the assets were no longer marital property and they were the sole property of the individual spouse. Again, this was a context of divorce and then bankruptcy. Finally, there was a case, and this is a federal case, this Enray Gendreaux, I believe is the way to pronounce it, G E N D R E A U. This was a federal case. In that case, the former wife was awarded an interest in her spouse's pension. Thereafter, he filed for bankruptcy and he tried to do the same thing. I want my obligation to give her a share to be discharged because it's an obligation and I'm trying to discharge these obligations in bankruptcy. And the bankruptcy court denied the husband's motion. And further, as a result of that denial, the husband appealed that decision up to the Ninth Circuit Federal Court. This is an interesting, and obviously it supports my client's position, but it's interesting because the federal court said not only is this debt not dischargeable because it's the non-retiree spouse's sole and separate property once the divorce is entered. But the court went on to say that the wife's claim for payment from the husband's pension does not lie with the husband, but instead is against the plan itself. So the court looked at the facts and said, this was the sole and separate property of the non-retiree. And if this debt is discharged in bankruptcy, rather than going after the former spouse, the non-retiree spouse could go after the plan itself. So a special counsel responded to my citing of these cases. And one of the things that they, special counsel cited was that that the law that I'm referencing has to do with either bankruptcy or divorce. And one of the arguments that counsel made was, well, listen, if she's got a claim against anybody, what she ought to do is go back to the divorce court and say, hey, I didn't get my 25%, so give me something else. But it doesn't work that way. If a final judgment is entered in the state of Florida and it settles property allocation, it's race judicata. You don't get to go back and say, well, look what happened to him. I lost my property. It doesn't work that way. So the special counsel suggested that what she should do is go back and complain to the court, but you can't. It's settled once and for all. So none of these cases that I've cited, not one of them, none of them say that these holdings are narrowly construed to either bankruptcy law or family law. Not one of them. First, the court says, this is the spouse's separate sole property. Stop, full stop. Then it says, so since it's the separate and sole property, you don't get to discharge it in bankruptcy. And in fact, if you do, the spouse gets to go after the plan and not the former or the retiree. So there isn't any sketchiness about these cases. There's no fudging around the edges. They simply say, final judgment is entered, that's her separate property. So that's our argument to the board today. Special counsel also argues that these bankruptcy cases were specifically addressing the question of what constitutes a dischargeable debt. But they're not. There's no discussion in the bankruptcy cases about what constitutes a dischargeable debt. So it's really a mischaracterization of the cases that Ms. Braddock cites. They don't talk about whether a pension obligation is a dischargeable debt. Instead, they say, that was her sole and private and separate property. So you can't discharge debt that isn't your property. So it was never considered as whether or not something is dischargeable or not. And also, I noted in the counsel's memorandum of law, let me pull this up. Give me just one second here. Counsel acts as if a debt that is discharged in bankruptcy is the kind of debt that awards a fresh start to a petitioner or respondent. But the courts in all the cases that I cited, none of them talk about the relative merit of bankruptcy and/or divorce or forfeiture. So the courts aren't weighing, well, this is alleged criminal conduct, so that's worse than somebody filed for bankruptcy who's only trying to get a fresh start. There is no allocation in any of these cases about the relative merit of someone filing bankruptcy to get a fresh start versus somebody committing a felony and forfeiting. So it does present a problem to the board. I get it. The court, the special counsel cited a case. And when I first looked at it, this Thompson case is the case that special counsel cited. And again, I do have that, I did attach that to my response. The Thompson case is very similar to the instant case. And in that case, the administrative board found, or the judge found that the non-retiree spouse, that's my client, was not entitled to continue to receive a portion of the retiree's pension. So very similar facts, they divorce, he retires, they start to get a pension, he's accused of violation, he loses his pension. And the former wife, so he had remarried, but the former wife, the one that got a chunk of his pension in the final judgment, she appeared at that hearing. And counsel tells me, so this case stands for the proposition that that former wife didn't get her share, so neither should she. But there's a pretty significant distinction. She never argued that it was her separate and sole property. She never raised that. She appeared at the hearing and she said, I don't want to lose my money. I'm entitled to a chunk of my former husband's pension. And I think you all ought to let me continue to have it. That's all she said. I think you should let me continue to have it. She never made the argument, hey, this is my sole separate property. And the minute the final judgment was entered, July of 2015, it's already mine. He doesn't get to do anything with it. And so while Thompson is very similar, you can't argue persuasively that Thompson applies to these facts because she never made the argument that we're making. So yeah, she lost. Maybe she should have argued what we are arguing. This property belongs to Kim Braddock because circuit court and federal court case law says that it does. That's what it says, that it belongs to her and that he can't do anything to take that property right away. I admit it presents a problem for the board because now what are you going to do? You're going to have all your potential retirees have to report when they're going through a divorce or when they marry. And I know that your employees, they're going to sign something that says, hey, if you do any of this stuff, you forfeit. So even though you have a statute that says you forfeit, you guys actually, you force the employees to sign something. So the police officer knows, if I engage in any of this, all of this nonsense, but all these comments about specified offenses, if I do any of that, I could lose my pension. You have him sign off on something. I don't know why you don't have the spouses sign off on it. Because what you could do is you could also allocate liability for that to the police officer. Unfortunately, though, none of that actually happened here. So it's Kim Braddock's separate property. It became her separate property when the final judgment was entered. And all of these circuit court cases and the one federal court case flat out says it's her separate property. So therefore, it can't be discharged in bankruptcy. And therefore, it shouldn't be forfeited. Even if he forfeits, she shouldn't forfeit.
Anybody have any questions?
Warsaw case here in Florida, I believe is very similar. And in that case, they did not give the ex-wife any standing. The court didn't respond to it.
Of course she didn't.
They did not give her any standing whatsoever.
Well, I understand that. And so.
Tell me the difference between that Warsaw case and, I mean, I think this Gendro cases are really good argument for you, but I want to, how is that different from the Warsaw case?
Well, what you said is that she didn't get any standing. And so, but we were permitted to intervene and we were permitted to make our argument. So it's hard to convince me that a case that doesn't stand for the proposition that a spouse argues, hey, ma'am, that's my property. You don't get to take it away. That can't stand for this proposition. So that would be my answer. That again, special counsel likes to talk about this Thompson case, like, oh my gosh, it's almost exactly the same thing, but nobody raised this argument. Nobody said, and it is interesting, I will admit to you, there is no forfeiture case law that I can find. I mean, I have to concede that, there isn't. It's not out there. But the one case, so there is an absence of a ruling on this. There are administrative hearings that have taken place and opinions have been issued that said, you don't get, you know, you're the non-retiree, you don't get the pension or your portion of it. But listen, it's hard to look at circuit court cases and a federal court case that, and again, I hate to beat a dead horse, but they don't say anything about narrowly construing a holding that it only matters if it's bankruptcy. And you know, courts are famous for that. They can't stop themselves from telling you, this only applies in certain instances. None of these cases said that. They all said, that's her property, it's her sole and separate property and it became it when the final judgment was entered. And no case that I saw, did you have a counsel or a wife come in and argue, you can't do that, it's my sole and separate property? So I would distinguish it in that way.
I have three more for you.
Okay.
First, I know that the other counsel is going to argue that we are not in a RISA plan. So I'm sure he will address that in his rebuttal. Second, we know since we are a government plan, we can't honor quadrants.
Yep.
And third, and I think the big distinction between this case and the Gendro case is that the family court ordered that she be given half his pension in the Gendro case. In this case, Ms. Braddock is receiving the 25% at the request of Mr. Braddock. It was not ordered by the court.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I won't interrupt.
Right, the court ordered him to come in here and tell us that she is due 25% of this pension. that she is due 25% of his pension, which he did. But we are, we are paying that pension at his request, not at the order of the court. So there's, there's a, there's a pretty big difference there in, in the case that you're citing, in this one, in that, in that private plan, they have to honor the quadro and it was ordered by the family court. In this case, that's not what happened. The family court said he owes her 25% of his pension. And then he came in and we have the form where he asked us to pay her that.
Yeah, but the reason he asked, the reason he asked you to pay her...
Big obligation to do so, right.
Yeah, because there's a, there's a final judgment entered by the court. Then the court, listen, that's what...
But in, in that final judgment, the plan administrator was ordered to pay that 50% in the Gendreau case. That is not what happened here. What happened here was, Steve was ordered to provide him with 25% of his pension and then he came and requested it from us. And I think that's a significant difference.
I'll tell you why I don't think it is.
Okay.
I don't think it is because I've been jumping up and down here saying, "Tell me where in any of these circuit court cases, or even the federal court case, where they said it only applies if it's in ERISA, it only applies if you have a quadro." They don't. I'm telling you, they don't.
Right.
They simply don't.
But you're also telling me that cases here in Florida, they do, she was, the, the wife in, in the case I just referenced was, Warsaw, was granted intervention and the court still did not give her standing.
So then, I guess my, my question would be, what happens when you have an administrative hearing and a decision, administrative decision that conflicts with either a circuit court or a federal court, uh, case? And, I mean... Oh no, I'm just, I don't, I know, I, that was just sort of me saying, really, to all of you.
I can answer for the court, you, you have a right to.
Right.
And that's exactly what happened in the Warsaw case and it went up and the ex-wife was never granted. But, but, and I think what, what Warren said, the Warsaw case seemed very similar to this one. And it is in fact a forfeiture ex-spouse situation. And she was granted intervention. And she, they did make their argument. And the, the board went ahead and forfeited the pension.
But she didn't argue that it was her sole and separate property.
I agree, I don't, I'm not saying, but I mean, the court. The, the board dealt with it, they granted intervention, they made the case. It went up through appeals and she never prevailed with anyone else.
And I, you're right about that. But it's like saying, "I raise a defense that isn't a defense." And so, because she lost, she ought to lose. And my response to that is, hang on a second, that she never raised this defense.
I understand that, and I, I would say that whatever this board decides, you have a right to appeal and...
I understand. And, and you're right, we do. My hope is that the board will decide, "Oh, that's not something we want to do, maybe." And, and again...
I'm the one that said, "Do that, can I get the call?"
And again, even that Warsaw case, I mean, they, she did not argue that it was her sole and separate property. So, I don't think anybody can be persuasive, maybe not persuasive to me anyway, maybe you're different. But, but persuasively argue, "Here's a case where she lost. Okay, well, let me see, what'd she say? Well, she's not saying what we're saying, so she had a bad argument," is my, is my take on that. That's all.
And I, I like your argument, but...
I know, but I understand. Well, thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Are, are, are you going to take testimony?
I had a tendency to.
You want to do it now?
Sure.
Okay.
Or do you want to, do you want to make the, do you want me to respond on the legal argument or just leave it for the closing?
I would prefer you leave it for closing because the time was stretched too much.
Yes.
But it really, I mean, you're, it's your case here, so... If you would prefer to do it now?
So I'll, I'll put it to the chair and to the board. The, the question on the table trustees is, I could respond, it's going to be fresher in your memory after the very capable legal arguments that you just heard. I could do it now, or I could do it in my closing. I think it's going to be more efficient and more time, uh, you know, more, you know, more efficient and more productive from that standpoint if I just leave it to the end rather than me having, me speaking multiple times.
I, I know at least one of the trustees has a question for you right now.
Again, in regards to that, but I can wait until the...
No, 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 that's what you prefer, let's do it now. You're the decision-making body, so we're going to, we're going to defer you. It would like you to do it now.
Yeah, I would like it. In regards to per, per claim, her position.
Yeah, her position. Potentially discuss some of it at the closing, but let me just go for some of the high-level points.
And from the podium.
Did you do from the podiums?
For recording purposes.
First of all trustees, Adam Levinson, board special counsel. Florida does not have an innocent spouse rule. There are other states that the pension ordinance specifically says that in the case of a forfeiture, an innocent spouse does not lose a pension benefit. And I invite the trustees to look at both your pension ordinance and the state statute 112. It's mandatory shall forfeit. There is no discussion whatsoever in the case law or in the statute of a innocent spouse exception, there is no exception. First observation. Second exception was this notion of res judicata with the cases that were ably described, Atkins and DeSantis. So, this concept of res judicata applies vis a vis the parties in the case. So, a decision in the DeSantis case applies to the DeSantis parties. A decision in the Atkins case applies to the Atkins parties. You are not a party, as was pointed out by the chair, I believe, to the underlying marital agreements. So, the pension contract is between the officer, the public employee, and the municipality. The pension contract is between you and the city, the pension board and the member. That's the pension contract, that's the pension which is constitutionally protected. And by the way, there is no innocent spouse exception when we looked at the Florida constitution either. So, the two-party arrangement does not include a spouse. And that makes the larger point, which is, and this is the Childress case and I'm also going to talk about O'Donnell. The Childress case says that there's a condition precedent. And let me make sure we understand what that means, a condition precedent, that you have to work 10 years or whatever the case may be in different plans to vest, or otherwise you don't get the pension. There are other conditions precedent, you have to stick around to retirement age. You have to not take out your contributions. If you take a refund of your contributions, you'll lose the pension, you just get your money back, which you would always get. So, a former spouse in theory would be entitled to a portion of the refund of the benefits. If, if you take a refund, then you're always entitled to a refund if there is a forfeiture. But the point is, there's a condition, and I'm going to read you from some of the cases. The condition precedent means that the pension disappears. If you forfeit a pension, that entire pension is gone, there is no longer any separate property. So, in a divorce case, what the court does is it identifies separate property for spouse A and separate property for spouse B. But there is no longer any property, the rest, which means the legal terminology, that the, the property disappears because there's a condition that there is no forfeiture. Let me read you now from some of the cases that talk about this. So, this is the Childress case. And the Childress case, and, and you see the, the parties and the spouses in these cases trying to make all kinds of arguments. They try to argue that this violates ex post facto, this is harsh, this violates excessive fines. They say violates double jeopardy. Here, we're hearing a bankruptcy argument that you should take bankruptcy proceedings, which is a separate court, that's a separate federal statute. There's no bankruptcy provision that applies here. And let me talk about ERISA real quick. We are a governmental pension plan. A governmental plan is exempt from ERISA. If you look at the definition of what qualifies under ERISA, so governmental entities are exempt from ERISA. So, the provisions of ERISA which are applying and bankruptcy applying to ERISA plans has no bearing on public pension plans. But let me read you a little bit from Childress. So, the court is pointing out that while this may appear harsh because the innocent spouse did nothing wrong, right? So, it's, it's harsh, the courts recognize that. But it goes on to say in the opinions that the contract, which is the pension contract, includes a condition precedent that the employee must refrain from committing specified offenses prior to retirement. And if you commit a specified offense while you're an employee, that pension unfortunately gets, gets, uh, gets forfeited. So let me read you a little bit more about how that's built into, that's a term and condition, a condition precedent of the pension which applies to anyone who otherwise would have gotten the benefit. It may appear harsh, but it serves a unique alternative purpose to assure the people's right to secure and sustain the public trust. And then another court makes this related point, and we spoke at length about the, the Thompson case. I want to read you from the very bottom of Thompson, which is the administrative decision, which is the, the case that we have a substantial discussion about. So what does Thompson say at the end? Well, Thompson points out is that the only remedy that the spouse has is to seek entitlement with a, I'll, I'll read it to you. Perhaps the former wife's only remedy is to seek modification of the quadro to obtain a new allocation of marital assets, if any remain. And it goes on to say that Thompson could not create or a transfer or assignment binding on the board. So, anything that the marital parties do is not binding on you. Your obligation comes from the statute. You have no obligation to the spouse if the pension disappears when it gets forfeited. And the last point I wanted to make about Thompson is on the final page of Thompson. And the court sort of walks through what the alternative is, that if we allow former spouses to make these kind of legislative arguments, and really, that's how I would characterize the very able, reasonable, rational arguments that you heard, that this isn't fair, what about the spouse? So that's a legislative argument that should be addressed to the Florida legislature, that this isn't fair, which has been done in other states. But again, there is no innocent spouse. So, addressing that kind of concern, in the Thompson case, the court describes, or the hearing officer describes, that were we to agree with an innocent spouse to hold other alms would permit a plan participant who had been charged with a specified offense to circumvent the requirements of the constitution and the state laws by merely assigning his benefit and interest in the plan to a third party. Such a holding would stand forfeiture laws on their head. And otherwise, in other words, if you could agree in a divorce that my wife is going to get, or my spouse is going to get 90% or whatever percent it's going to be, that's an end run. That's a way to circumvent the very strict, severe consequences of the, of the pension law. And case after case, the courts have held, this does not violate ex post facto constitutional requirements. It's not an unfair penalty, an excessively harsh penalty. So, for all kinds of reasons, the courts have heard these discussions. And, and another point about, well, what wasn't discussed, someone might argue, if you look at some of these cases, they don't, I didn't, they didn't make the argument that it was sole property. You heard that argument, that I'm making this novel argument that's never been made before. And in the Warsaw case or in the Thompson case, the spouse never said it was my sole property. I, I pointed out to you that I worked for a judge. And attorneys make all kinds of arguments in their briefs and in oral argument. But the, the, the opinion that the court writes, you never know what was argued necessarily. You just know what they thought was important enough for them to discuss. So, my response, and I, I understand your argument, is it's very possible they argued it was separate property or sole property. I'm, I'm sorry? Yes. So, so the point is that in these written legal opinions, you just know the arguments that the court thought worthwhile of addressing doesn't mean that it wasn't argued in a previous case. We're rounding out some of the arguments. Here, we're dealing with special pension law, we're not talking about bankruptcy law. There are no public pension cases where Florida has recognized an innocent spouse. The statute does not contain an exception. We're hearing a legislative argument, we're not in ERISA plan, we do not honor quadros. And, a person is not a party, the pension is not a party to a divorce. It's only the two individuals who are parties to the divorce. I'll, I'll take any questions on this issue. So, we don't have the provision in front of us, we can pull it up and read it to you. But there are certain provisions in order to be a tax-qualified plan. There are certain federal tax requirements. And one of the things that, this protects the officer. And I'll give the example because I'm located near a casino. And, uh, one of the things that protects officers is if you wind up, and I, I use the example of casinos, if you wind up having creditors coming after you or loan sharks, because you're, you know, you're, you're gambling, and the loan sharks or creditors say, "We are entitled to your pension." And the quick answer is, the only way a creditor gets paid is if we pay money to you, to the member, then the creditor can get the money from you. But we do not accept assignments of benefits. Uh, we only pay to the member, and if there's a joint survivor option or a disability provision or a beneficiary provision, we pay pursuant to the plan provisions. But we do not accept none of the pension plans in Florida, governmental pension plans, except assignment of rights. And that's the argument here, that this is an assignment of rights which flows from an arrangement from the divorce. But the pension is between you and, and I said you, the pension board and the member, the spouse is not a party to the pension contract. And the pension contract includes this condition precedent, meaning that the spouse is a sole, is a, what was referred to as a, um, the terminology is a third-party beneficiary. They're a third-party beneficiary, they're not a direct participant in the plan. I hope that answers the question.
You want to take testimony now?
I would like to.
Please do. But, for the record, identify yourself and everything.
Does anybody need a bathroom break before... Yeah, can we just take like a five-minute recess? Hey. Yeah, I would have said enough.
We'll be able to do it.
About five minutes, so we should be wrapping up soon. Yes. Let's do the questions with everybody, just avoid... Thank you. Yeah, I'm not trying to put my back to a show.
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense frankly. Besides the fact that it just feels weird.
Yeah, I don't.
I wouldn't be able to hear him in speech.
Adjust the podium angle maybe for your...
I don't, I don't want to...
It's wireless, so it should be fine as long as it doesn't fall off in there.
Right, that way we can see you and we can...
Is that better? Okay. Oh, sure. Thanks. Um, so I'm going to call my witness, Stephen Braddock, who is, is subject to the forfeiture pension here. Good morning, Mr. Braddock, how are you doing today?
Hi.
Will you please state your name for the record?
My name is Stephen Michael Braddock.
And... You'd want me to, should the court report? That would make more sense. Mr. Braddock, how long were you employed with the Port Orange Police Department?
Just under 24 years.
And were you in the same position each year, or did you change positions? Thank you. What was the last position you held with the Port Orange Police Department?
I was a motor sergeant. Over a couple of different departments.
And at the time that you retired, you retired as a motor sergeant? In what year did you retire?
2018.
And prior to your retirement in 2018, we've heard a lot of information today regarding the notarization services that were used here at the Port Orange Police Department. Do you recall meeting Ms. Solana while you were employed with the Port Orange Police Department? Did you know her beforehand?
When I started working for Port Orange.
Correct. Did you have a relationship or a friendship with her outside of the police department? Describe to me that friendship.
Well, we would have lunch together periodically. She was, her boyfriend Chad, we became friendly with them. I helped her out in a couple of different situations where she gets some advice. She had some problems with her structure that she was living in, and I helped her out with that. When there were some hurricanes coming through, she lost power and stuff like that was happening to her, and she was in bad time. Yeah, we interacted with each other very well.
So you would say that you were friends or good friends?
I would say we were good friends. I would. Have lunch together in the break room, and you know, we would do things socially.
So you were aware that she was a notary? And had you ever asked her to notarize anything outside of work or outside of the Port Orange Police Department?
Not that I could recall.
Do you recall when she did notarize something for you here at the Port Orange Police Department?
I do.
And what document did she notarize for you?
She documented some paperwork that I had to fill out for my parents. And the warrant deed that was brought up earlier was associated with signatures.
Let the record reflect that I'm presenting exhibit one, which is. Recognize that document, Mr. Braddock?
Yes, ma'am.
What date is that document dated at the top of the page there?
It is the 7th day of March 2017.
If you'd like to flip the page for me. Do you see signatures on that, on the second page? And whose signatures do you see?
Dad's signature, my signature, Solana's signature.
And is there a date on the second page?
There's a date on the bottom of the page. It says the 7th day of March 2017.
Do you recall when your parents signed this deed? Thank you. We had a question from the board earlier about how long between the signature of your parents and the notarization. Do you recall about the extent of time between your parents signing it and it being notarized?
A couple hours that were involved with it.
And have you ever been a notary? Have you ever taken the notary class? Have you ever had the occasion to read the notary statute? When you brought the document to be notarized, did Ms. Solana present any objection to notarizing the document? Did she tell you there was any reason why she couldn't notarize the document? Did she tell you that there would be any issue with her notarizing the document?
No, not at all.
So would you say that you thought that the document was properly notarized?
I being a notary, I wouldn't know the exact requirement.
And when the document was notarized, you recorded it?
Or did it, the warranty deed?
And did anyone present any objection to you reporting it?
Not at all.
Was it your belief that the document was validly executed?
Yes, as far as I was.
You've also testified that there were other documents that you had with regards to your parents. What documents were those? For example, did you have the power of attorney? Did you have a will, anything like that?
Those active powers of attorneys.
And who didn't get the power of attorney name as agent?
Me as an agent. I understand your question.
You are. So the power of attorney for your mother named you as agent? And the power of attorney for your father named you as agent? Were you the primary caregiver for your parents?
Yes.
For how long approximately?
It ended up being prolonged, but it was over a year since, you know, some medical issues with her, with my mother and father. Some declining going on, so the power of attorney.
And the power of attorney, who notarized that document?
Our attorney.
If you know.
Well, one for my father, he had his own attorney staff go ahead and re-arrange that. And then there was another power of attorney that was later located several years after my dad's passing. An active power of attorney, my mom, which is alive, which was done back years ago. So that was notarized by the same attorney that notarized.
But to clarify, Solana didn't notarize either of those, correct?
No, not at all.
When you came to have documents notarized, did you have to check in? Did you have to use a special key card to get in the building?
Not through the front door. The back doors do have a proxy card. At the time, I don't know if we still have that now. Technology change.
So if I were to desire to have notorial services, could I walk through the front door and request that? We've also, in the deposition of Ms. Solana, she indicated that anyone could obtain the notary services and that she was aware that she could charge for those notorious services. Were you aware that she could or should have charged?
I wasn't aware of the policy on getting something notarized. I'm understanding your question.
You are. And did you pay for any notorial services?
Not, not within this department.
Do you know anyone that did?
Nobody would really pay for them. They're just, seeing if Suzanne could notarize something, as far as I'm aware, she can ask for any payments or anything like that.
And to clarify for the record, when you say Suzanne, is that Ms. Solana?
Yes, Solana, I apologize.
Thank you. Yeah, it's just for clarification purposes. So, once the document was notarized, you were under the impression that it had been properly executed and properly notarized, is that correct? All right. Do you think Ms. Solana would have notarized a document for you outside of work?
Absolutely.
All right.
Mr. Braddock, you testified before under oath. And you understand when you testify under oath, you want to make sure, did you take any medicine before today that might interfere with your ability to testify truthfully? Have you had anything to drink today that might impede your ability to concentrate and understand the questions? So it's going to be your intent to answer honestly, consistent with the oath that was administered by the court reporter? You testified earlier that there was a prior power of attorney that was not notarized by Solana, which was discovered at the assisted living facility, which is Manor Care, correct? There was a prior power of attorney. Sure, I'm just referring to your prior testimony that there was a prior power of attorney that was filled out by your mother or father, which was not notarized by Solana years ago. I want to make sure everybody follows. There was a prior power of attorney which gave you a power of attorney to act on behalf of your mother and father. And that was not notarized by Solana. And that was notarized years ago. What did you not tell us about that prior power of attorney?
What did I, what more time on the question?
I'm giving you an opportunity to tell us, because your attorney thinks it's significant that Solana did not notarize the prior, years ago, power of attorney. I'm asking you if there's anything significant about that power of attorney that you're not telling us today.
Only that it was in place during the situations.
So the power of attorney, that's the subject of this proceeding today, had two people who were given authority under the power of attorney. Who were the people who had authority under the power of attorney from 2017?
Two people that were listed on this.
Correct. Who were the people listed on the document? Who were given the power under the durable power of attorney in 2017? So trustees, I want everyone to look at it. And the document we're talking about is document number 19. So who does power of attorney, the durable power of attorney, give the power executed in March of 2017? That's a power of attorney to you and to who else? We'll talk about that. But yes, that's the date that's shown on the document is 2015. But the testimony today was that it was signed in 2017. But the date on the document is 2015. So I'm asking, who had the power of attorney in exhibit number 19?
Objection, I apologize. That is a mischaracterization. I was referencing the deed, which was the document in front of my client, who read the date from the document in front of my client, which was the warranty deed and exhibit one, as I stated when I presented it.
Let me repeat the question, which is the same question. Who does that power of attorney, which is document number 19, exhibit number 19, give the power to act as an attorney? Who does it empower?
Well, I'm not trying to.
I said it's not intended to be a trick question. Look at the first paragraph. I, Susan Braddock, if you want to read it, what does the power of attorney do? Who does it give the power of attorney to?
Of myself and my wife.
To yourself, and who was the wife that's listed? Okay, so the power of attorney, which has a date of 2015, gives the authority to act as the power of attorney, you and your wife, Mary Louise.
And I have. Okay.
So yes or no question, does it give the authority to act as the power of attorney, you and your wife, Mary?
Yes.
Okay, now let's compare this power of attorney with the power of attorney which was located at the Manor Care, the assisted living facility. So you didn't tell us today. I gave you the chance to tell us. So here, I'm going to tell you what the answer is I'm looking for. What is the difference between the original power of attorney from years ago versus this power of attorney, which is you and Mary Louise?
This power of attorney, I put this together. And there was an incorrect date on it.
We'll come back to the date, but the main distinction I want to elicit from you is that the original power of attorney had two people on the original power of attorney, just as this one has two people, you and Mary. Who were the two people on the original power of attorney? And then?
That original one.
We do not in the record, but there's testimony about it in the file, in the deposition. So my question is, who was on the original power of attorney?
Jack, we don't have the document in front of us. None of us can verify any of the information.
It's in the depositions. I'll give the record sites. And I'm asking the witness under oath, who was on the original power of attorney?
For my mother or for my father?
Let me back up. How did this case, this is a clue for everybody. How did this case come to the attention of the police department, triggering the Internal Affairs investigation? What precipitated this case being filed?
Are you asking for my opinion on that?
I'm asking you to answer to the best of your knowledge. What precipitated this case coming forward?
My brother. And my brother was on the original power of attorney for my mom. And my brother had not stepped up to the plate for any of this until he decided that he wanted to. I'm just trying to clarify. I think everybody in this area knows that I was going through a great deal of stress and emotions and things of that nature that were associated with hardships with my family.
I'm going to walk you through some exhibits now. Let me take back exhibit nine. And just so everyone understood, because I see this little bit of discussion between trustees, the original power of attorney that I'm referencing had two names, had Stephen and his brother Andrew. But the updated power of attorney, which was not notarized with the witnesses being present, and I'm not arguing, I'm just letting everybody understand the testimony, took Andrew off and added your wife. That was the consequence of the change in that power of attorney, correct? Adding your wife, taking out Stephen, I'm sorry, taking out Andrew.
There's a reason behind that.
I'm not asking you about that. Your counsel can ask you for the reasons. All right, I want to walk you through some exhibits. Exhibit number 16, everyone has it in the file. It is the oath. These are all admitted. I'd like you to read for me a little bit from exhibit number 16. And you can read all of it, or you can read the highlighted language. What does the oath of a police officer in Port Orange say? Want to read from the bottom paragraph?
Everybody has a copy of this, but you still need me to read this.
I want you to read for us out loud. I solemnly swear, Stephen Braddock, do what?
Uphold the law made by this legislative body of the city of Portland, Florida, and that I am duly qualified to hold office under Florida State Statute 543.
It's an oath to uphold the law in Florida. Let's go to exhibit. Trustees have an opportunity to look at exhibit 18. I'm not going to have you read all of it. I want to reference a specific provision on exhibit 18. I'll identify what exhibit 18 is. This is the Policy and Procedure Directive dealing with oath of office. Could you read for us, please, from paragraph 1.11? Target is on page one of exhibit number 18. Read for us, please, 1.11, and tell us what you think that means.
My opinion on the policy.
Read it first and tell us what you think it means.
All law enforcement officers shall take an oath of office and loyal people to enforce the laws and uphold the state and federal constitution prior to being sworn.
And that's why you took the oath pursuant to that policy directive?
Yes.
Exhibit 17, which is another policy directive. Trustees, exhibit 17. We're going to flip over to page 14, and this is section 26.1.139. I'd like you to read it and tell me what you think it means. 26.1.139 on page 14 of exhibit 17.
Okay. Failure to report a fellow department member or employee's violation of the law, rule, or regulation, policy, or procedure, general order, or specific order prohibited. To end this or to disend, all such violations shall be reported in writing to a supervisor within the department.
What does that mean to you?
That if a sworn officer detects a criminal offense, That if a sworn officer detects a criminal offense, then they have a duty to report.
In fact, let's slip to the last page, page 15, 26.1.144. Same idea, read it, tell me what it means. 26.1.144.
Commission of a felony. Department personnel shall not commit any act or crime defined by state or federal law as a felony, whether chargeable or not.
Does it say, when it refers to any felony, that you have to understand that it's a felony, or does it just say any felony?
We'll read it again. Mission of the felony, commission of a felony, department personnel shall not commit any act or crime defined by the state or federal law as a felony, whether chargeable or not.
We don't want to keep you here all day, so we're going to move ahead. That was exhibit 17. We're now moving to exhibit number three, which is the arrest affidavit. Trustees can look at exhibit three. What were the felonies? We've talked about this already. They are listed in the arrest affidavit.
Exploitation of the elderly, elderly, and uttering of fortunes.
And if you could read for us what the statutory citations for those two felons are.
Our Florida state statute 825.103 sub A sub or sub three sub A. And the secondary one is Florida state statute 831.02.
Thank you. Trustees, we're going to move over to exhibit number four, which is the information, the charging document. And I appreciate that we're doing this expeditiously. So the arrest affidavit was submitted. We just read from it. We're now looking at exhibit number four, which is the information. Please identify for us, what are the two felonies that are listed in the information, giving us the names and the section?
Oh, yes, sir. As I previously stated, first charge is exploitation of the elderly. You want me to continue after your highlighted area?
You can read as much as you want, but what I'm looking for is the name of the two offenses and the statutory citations for the two felons.
Okay, exploitation of the elderly or disabled adult, $50,000 or more, and then uttering a forgery.
What's the statutory citation?
The statutory utilized in this affidavit.
Also, this information.
This information, thank you very much, is 825.103 sub one and 831.02 sub three.
Your cooperation.
Yes, sir.
We are moving ahead now, trustees, to exhibit number five, which is the plea agreement. So we've looked at the information. We've looked at the affidavit. Now we're looking at number five, which is the actual plea. And it's the same question. The question is, what were the crimes that are listed on the plea? And if you could read for me the highlighted language, and we'll talk about it. So what first is the two offenses listed on the plea?
The two offenses are exploitation of the elderly and uttering forgery. That's what it says, uttering.
Is there a signature on the plea?
Yes.
The signature is on the plea.
That is my signature.
I would like you to read to us from paragraph number three.
Just the highlighted area?
As much as you want from paragraph three, then we're going to talk about it. You want me to read it out loud? Paragraph number three, so everybody can hear it.
I just wanted to clarify on that. I understand that this plea of not guilty denies that I committed a crime. I understand that a plea of guilty admits I committed the crime charged. A best interest guilty plea, a plea of no no low contender.
And that's the part we're talking about today. Plea of no low contender. Continue.
You want me to start over again, or just kind of go through?
I'm just pointing out to everybody that the prior part of the paragraph.
Clear, that's all.
And I agree, we want to be clear. The prior part of the paragraph deals with other kinds of plea. But the plea that you entered is a no low plea. So here it talks about the consequences of a no low plea. If you could continue reading, please.
Where I left off, I mean, I do not contest the state's evidence against me. I entering the above, I am voluntary submitting myself to the court sentencing authority. I understand that if the court accepts my plea, there will be no trial and the court will be imposed sentence based on my plea. I agree the factual basis of this, of the court to accept my plea is contained in documents in the file, including plain affidavit. I understand that if I am not a citizen of the United States, I may be deported. I understand that the court may impose monetary penalties, assessments to the clients' courts, cost restitution applicable and or other fees.
You can stop reading unless you want to continue.
No, I do not.
What is the date that you signed that plea agreement?
The date stamped here is October 14, 2021.
Were you represented by counsel at the time that you signed that plea agreement?
Yes.
Exhibit number 10. Follow the entry of the plea. Exhibit number 10 is a judgment for costs, and we can do this quickly. If trustees could go to exhibit number 10, I'm just going to ask you to tell me what this document is and what you had to pay after you signed that document.
This document says order of final judgment. Trying to locate.
It's the five, the five, the $500 amount.
$500 amount? I'm trying to locate it.
Where there's an X at the top.
Okay. That's $418.
Sorry, I missed one. I said 500, but if you could just read for us what the dollar amount was for the X.
Yes, 418.
$418, and it's signed by who?
Judge Zambrano.
And Judge Zambrano was the judge in your case?
Correct.
Who accepted the factual basis for your plea in the plea call of the plea? Exhibit number 12 is the FDLE Internal Affairs Report is what I call it. And this is a big, thick document, trustees, but I'm going to ask you to go to the pages pages that have columns in them. So I don't know that there's a page number. It says page one of four, but it's not page one in the packet. It's the page that has the chart. Now I want everybody to find that chart. Because I'm going to be asking you about, and counsel, I want them to know, I'm going to be asking you about some of these things. Let me see through a nodding of heads when everybody finds in exhibit number 12, which is the FDLE report, the chart of payments. Make sure everybody has it. Correct, the document starts on November 28, 2018. Does everybody have that in front of them?
I'm sorry, I don't.
Let's make sure everybody gets it. It's important. Everybody has page 104. And at the very bottom, it has a number on it which ends in 452. The page has a 452 at the bottom right.
I have it, sir.
Okay. So following the signature, if you will, of the power of attorney, which took your brother off and added your wife, would you agree payments started to be made pursuant to that power of attorney?
Yes.
That was the reason for the power of attorney. So the bank would follow your instructions and your wife's instructions. And no longer follow the instructions, by the way, of your brother.
Not to follow his instructions because they were not warranted at the time.
So I'm going to ask you now to read for us some of the dollar amounts on page 104 that are payments to Mary. The starting, the top of the chart on 417 of 2017, what was the first dollar amount paid to Mary?
A thousand dollars.
On 824 of 2017. It's a who?
Mary Brown.
Because now she's on the power of attorney, right? So she can go to the bank and get whatever she wants, but she's now on the power of attorney. And Stephen's no longer on the power of attorney.
No, you're going to put it on the spot.
Sorry. The brother is no longer on the power of attorney.
Correct.
Correct. Sorry. All right, on 1018 of 2017, there's a large number. Could you tell us what that dollar amount is?
It is $200,000.
Who was that paid to?
That was paid to Mary Braddock.
It was Mary Braddock?
My wife.
Did you know that $200,000 is paid to your wife on or about 1018?
Yes.
From what account?
It was from my mother's account to a joint account, which we were also on my mother's account as well.
And continue going down the list. We won't do all of them, but some of them. February 16, I believe, of 2018, there's another large dollar amount. What is that sum?
Forty-two thousand nine sixty.
Paid to who?
My wife.
What is your wife's name?
Mary Braddock.
Because she's now on the power of attorney, correct?
Correct. I can give you a definition on that, but.
I'll let you give some additional testimony. Let me go through the document first. I'm not going to go through all the payments. What's another organization or the name that you see in the middle of the page? I'll let everybody see. It starts with the G. What is the name that starts with the G in the middle of the page?
Grace Manor.
What is Grace Manor?
That is where my mother was staying.
How long did your mother stay at Grace Manor?
Until Grace Manor decided to evacuate her as a illness that she contracted allegedly from the location.
So you've just described the reason she was evacuated from Grace Manor was because of an illness. Is it not true that Grace Manor says the reason why it evicted her was because Grace Manor wasn't being paid?
An explanation for that.
Before you give the explanation, and I want to hear it, is it not true that the reason Grace Manor evicted your mother was because Grace Manor was not getting paid?
It was my understanding that they can't evict a patient or a resident for lack of payment. That was my understanding. Their their action to evacuate my mother from the ALS was due to a urinary tract infection. Afterwards, she was no longer permitted to come back because there was a balance due, and they felt they weren't going to get any further funds. Funds that were being moved around were funds that we were trying to pay different organizations that were involved with my mom and my dad. There was various transactions that were going back, trying to get this whole entire situation under control because it was beyond my purview and and learnings. I was not familiar with how the systems were working.
You, we don't have to go into too much detail. Do you know the date of the last payment to Grace Manor?
I do not.
You know, when she was evicted from Grace Manor?
I do not.
We're now going to flip trustees to page three of four, which has at the bottom right the number 452. So the payments we just looked at were checks, significant checks. We looked at significant checks. We're now on page three, going to look at other kinds of withdrawal. So we're looking at the bottom chart on page three of four. What is the title of this column? The dates goes to the second column. What is the second column?
It says banking ATM withdrawal.
By who? Who had access to the account?
My wife.
Those are.
Myself.
Thank you. So the second column is bank ATM withdrawals. What's the third column say?
It's very difficult to see clearly. Check. Credit. Or then purchases.
Credit, check, credit card pin purchases. And I agree, it's hard to read, but I think we can all agree it's check, credit card pin purchases. What is the third column?
Banking debit card deduction.
I'm going to ask you, I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'm going to pick at some of the big numbers. On or about, as it goes by month. So it's the month of August of 2017. There was a, I have my finger on a dollar number, which was a check credit card pin purchase. What was that dollar amount?
This is 2,354.
Below that, there's another credit card check pin purchase. What's the dollar amount? And this is in the month of September or October?
2,761.30.
There was also a bank debit purchase. That same month of how much?
2,7538.48. I don't know what.
Yes. So what I'm going to ask you about is some of these purchases and these transactions. When your mother was in the ALS, was she limited in her ability to move?
Oh, actually.
The report mentions Carnival Cruise Lines. There's a payment to Carnival Cruise Line. Was your mother capable of going and did she go on the Carnival Cruise Line?
She could have went if she wanted to. My money and my mom's money, my father's money was all pulled niggling between two branches, two banks. I don't know which bank that one is referring to regarding the Carnival Cruise because it doesn't specify.
Following is a summary I'm reading to you of ATM withdrawals, credit card and debit card purchases from April, April through April 2017 to 2019. I'm going to ask you lastly, we'll do them real quickly on page four, which is a document with the number 452 at the bottom. Just read me for the period of April through May of 2018, and we'll start there.
You want me to just list them for you?
You want to read me some of the dollar amounts of transfers or payments?
Sure.
In this account?
Sure, no problem. First one's listed and highlighted at 183667.
Now for the month of May?
The month of May is 206234.
Which is $2,062?
Correct.
Now in September, how much was the transfer or payment?
It is 1,215.
February, there's another amount which is substantial?
$1,670.90.
One of the documents that was filed by your attorney in this case, or by one of the attorneys in this case, was the restitution order. How much did you pay in restitution in order to make the case go?
See a document that.
I can pull it out and we can look at it. But ballpark, how much was the restitution?
It was over $700,000.
I'm going to now change the subject of the cross examination. We're going to, when we're almost done, we're now going to look at the invoices having to do with the notary seal. We can do this real quickly. So we're going over to exhibit 14. Exhibit 14, which you may or may not recognize. Whose name is on exhibit 14?
Cheryl and Suzanne.
Who is, who is Cheryl and Suzanne?
He is the notary.
What is the dollar amount on this invoice?
$103.
For what was the invoice for?
Notary public bond.
And what address is given for Cheryl, Cheryl and Solana?
The Port Orange Police Department.
I want you to hold, trustees are looking at 14. I want everyone to look at that number. What was the dollar amount again?
I'll say it again. It was $103.
Exhibit 15. What is the dollar on exhibit 15?
This is Debbie Grabowski.
We'll get to that. But what is the dollar amount? Just so we're consistent with the number. What's the, what was the number on exhibit 14?
103.
What's the number on exhibit 15?
103.
The same 103?
Yes.
What is the address on this son trust purchasing card receipt, if you will?
City of Port Orange.
Like I promised that we would talk about, trustees, the discrepancy on the date, the 2015 date. So let's do that real quickly and then we're finished. So we're going now to exhibit number 19. What was the date that exhibit 19 was brought by you to Solana for Solana to notarize? What date did you bring it to Solana?
It was 2017.
What is the date on exhibit 19?
2015.
When Solana signed this document as a notary and as a witness. Who else was sitting with you or standing with you in front of her desk?
It was just for. Those exercising power of attorney.
No further questions. Thank you.
I'll make this super quick as well. This is my exhibit one, I believe, or two. In any event, Mr. Braddock, recognize this document.
I'll state what it is, order of satisfaction of restitution.
And we're reading a few paragraphs aloud here, if you don't mind. Going ahead and one paragraph, go ahead and read that for me together with the two subparts.
Yes, ma'am. This, this case having come been heard before the court of petition or order of satisfaction of restitution at this court, having reviewed. been heard before the court of petition or order of satisfaction of restitution at this court, having reviewed the file, having heard testimony and otherwise being duly advised, it is therefore, it is adjudicated that restitution in the sum of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-three cents has been satisfied by way of this order and restitution and restitution requirements. Mary Louise Braddock, case number two zero one nine dash three zero five six four eight dash CFDB. And Stephen Michael Braddock, case number two zero one nine dash three zero five six four nine CFDB is hereby discharged. Done and ordered at Daytona Beach, at Daytona Beach, Russia County, Florida. On the date is stamped eight ten two thousand twenty-two at approximately two fifty-three PM. And there's a series of numbers afterwards, two zero two one one three four.
That's okay, thanks. So the document clearly states that the restitution has been satisfied.
Yes, ma'am.
And your restitution requirement is terminated?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Please, I just want you to read a little bit more from that document, if I could have it back.
It is in entirety.
Along with this, there's another document. Settlement agreement, if you will, which was filed by your counsel. I want the trustees to find it. You have a copy of that handy, or should I find it?
Would you like my copy? Is that what you're asking?
This was another document filed by your attorney along with.
Yeah, we have it. It's all the way.
What am I looking for? To read aloud?
Kind of the back of the first page, if you can. No, it started.
Just to make sure everyone has a copy. It was a document, a settlement agreement that was provided to the board by your attorney. Wasn't provided by me. How did the, you know, I didn't want to ask, but how did this document get in front of the board?
In what she's admitted. She identified as a person.
Yeah, she did.
What is the date on the document?
The date is the thirtieth day of November, twenty twenty-one.
When was the money transferred out of the account? And you can answer that by saying approximately, when was the power of attorney sign?
Power of attorney referring.
The power of attorney that took off your brother and added your, the wife.
As I recall, here. My brother was removed from it twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, and when was the restitution paid?
Thereafter.
How many years after? Rough idea, the original power of attorney had your brother, revised power of attorney, which was the subject of this case, was two thousand seventeen, and we went through a bunch of payments that were made. Potentially, you know, coming totaling seven hundred thousand dollars, and I'm simply asking, how long did it take for you to pay restitution to your brother if the payment started in two thousand seventeen when money was taken out of the accounts? When does your brother finally get paid?
Objection, the brother was not paid. The civil settlement agreement specifically states that it was the estate, and that's why the order was.
Fair enough. When does the money get paid into the estate in which your brother will get?
It's clearly stated on the first page. It was made as of November twenty ninth. That's on the seventh, right at the top of it.
I'm not going to ask you to read all of it, but there are certain paragraphs I want either trustees to look at or I can ask you to read for us. Okay, so trustees, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the trustees without asking the respondent to read them, but I, point is that the trustees will look at this document in its totality. And then you sign this document, which then gave rise to the payment of the restitution pursuant to that settlement.
As stated.
Thank you. Your testimony.
Maybe excused?
Witness may be excused. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back around.
Uh. Anything else for the board, if you want to make a closing argument? Yes. Trustees, you want to take a break or should we jump right into the closing?
Get it done because we're pushing fast.
I will do a closing and then seems to make sense to me that if there are any questions, we'll do the questions for all the attorneys at the end. So sure, let me know when everybody's ready.
Yeah, if you're ready, we'll be good to go. Wow, I think the court for us. Everybody ready? Ready? Okay, sir. Go ahead, sir.
So trustees, we started by explaining that these cases are not fun for anybody in the room. We started by describing that there is law, there's facts, and my job is to put the law and the facts together. And I want to make sure that everybody understands what the legal requirements are. I pointed out to you that the law is clear, the facts are established. How do we know the facts are established? Because you have the plea colloquy, which is the deposition and the transcript, if you will, and the record. And you have the fact that whenever a judge takes a plea to no contest or otherwise, guilty or no contest, there has to be a factual predicate. And let's talk about those offenses where we started, eight thirty-one point one oh two, the uttering statute. And this is to address the argument that was made by learned counsel that, that I have not proven that there was an intent, that there was a willful effort to violate the statute. So that was the argument that you heard. This is not willful. You need to have a, you have to have proof of willfulness and intent to defraud, however counsel wants to describe it. So first of all, I read several times the statute and I wanted to make sure everybody understands chapter one twelve, three, one, seven, three. And we're traveling under paragraph six, which is the catchall provision. So I want to get into what the definition of willfulness is. And sometimes people might think that willful might mean evil intent. That's not what willful means. So I want to tell you what the definition of willfulness is, and the case that I'm going to cite is the the case of Jones versus State, a criminal case from the first DCA in two thousand and five. So what is the definition of willfulness? Because willfulness is required under the state statute, but it's not mentioned, by the way, in your, in your municipal ordinance. And I would tell you that regardless of what your municipal ordinance says, if it's in the state statute, it applies. So I would agree that I do have to establish willfulness. But what does willfulness mean? So according to the Jones versus State case, nine, twelve, Southern Second, six eighty-six, the definition of willfulness, and it cites Black's Law Dictionary, is very simple. Willfulness is conscious motion of the will, voluntary, knowingly, deliberate, intending the result which actually comes to pass. Intentional, purposeful, not accidental or involuntary. That's all that willfulness means. That it wasn't accidental, but you intended it. So knowledge and willfulness are basically the same thing. It's purposeful, deliberate, not accidental. So what was not accidental in this case? The original power of attorney had Stephen and his brother. That power of attorney was found after the fact at the assisted living facility. But the new power of attorney, which is the subject of this case, took off the brother and added the wife. What then happened, which was deliberate, not accidental, as a result of the new power of attorney, taking off the brother and adding the wife? And I'm not going to walk you through all the payments, but those payments likely totaled over seven hundred thousand dollars, as you heard today. During the direct examination of the respondent, and I want to talk about nexus, and you've heard this already, but we're tying it all together. I need to establish a nexus under paragraph E six of the statute. And I'll read it to you so we're clear that the committing of any felony by a public officer or employee who willfully with intent to defraud the public or public agency of the faithful performance of her duty. That's what the statute is talking about. The willfulness relates to the faithful performance of their duty as a public officer or employee realizes or obtains, attempts to realize or obtain a gain or advantage for himself or some other person through the use of the power, rights, privileges, duties, or position in his or her office or their employment position. So what establishes a violation under the catchall provision? And the answer is the respondent did not choose any notary at any bank around the corner. The respondent chose a notary who would take at face value and not ask any questions. Not ask any questions about why it's two thousand seventeen, but the document that you looked at was dated two thousand fifteen. Not ask any questions about the fact that when a notary signs a document, and for the record, I'm going to read the statute again. The notary statute, which officers should know about, whether or not they actually knew what they should know, which is section one seventeen. One oh seven five, a notary cannot notarize a document if the person is mentally incapable of understanding the nature and effect of the document. When the mother wasn't in the room, because we heard on testimony today, the only two people that were standing next to, the only people that were with Solana was Solana and the respondent. The mother was not in the room, the father were not in the room, regardless of the day that it was, and that's subject to question. But regardless of the day it was notarized, the only people that were there for the notarization were not witnesses, not the, the principals, the only person with Solana was the respondent. That is a violation of the notary statute. It's a violation of the obligation to provide, let's go to the forfeiture statute, faithful performance of their duty as a public officer. That is the nexus. The nexus is the notary stamp. I also want you to look at the date of the notary stamp. The date of the notary stamp trustees is twenty twenty. And in that same statute, which is the notary statute, one seventeen point oh one, paragraph one, a notary is only appointed for four years. A notary seal is only good for four years. And we can do the math if you want to see that the notary seal would have expired had it been done in two thousand fifteen. Because a notary seal is only good for four years. And that's one of the things that got the attention of the FDLE investigator, and that report is in your, it's an admitted exhibit. So it was not just any notary that was selected. It was a notary who had signed whatever was given to her to not check to see that witnesses were present, to not check to see that witnesses were mentally capable. And that's why this notary was chosen. So the instrumentality, the nexus is the notary, the use of the office to ask the notary to do it. And we also had an admission, which frankly, I thought was a little surprising, but I appreciate the honesty. The question was asked, did you know Solana before you came to work or she came to work with the police department? And the answer was, which I was surprised to hear because it's truthful testimony, and I'm appreciating is what I'm saying. I'm appreciating truthful testimony. You didn't have to volunteer it, that you did not know Solana prior to meeting at, through the police department. Again, that's the nexus. That's the same nexus you have in the basketball case where the coach meets the kids through basketball. That's the same nexus when a sheriff is providing tip-off information to the bad guys. That's the connection to the job. That's all you need for the nexus. And the willfulness, violation of the duty in this case, and the willfulness is seen by the transfers that happen pretty quickly after the brother is taken off and the wife is added to the power of attorney. This is a legal observation, which I won't spend much time on, but there was some discussion about the Worsaw case. And the argument was made that the Worsaw case was an argument about the board, the job of the board, that the board has to interpret any ambiguity. You have to strictly interpret anything in the favor, because forfeitures are treated as disfavored. So you have to, if there's any ambiguity, you have to treat the ambiguity as, you have to resolve those disagreements on behalf of the, that was the argument that was being made. And the page that was being cited from the Worsaw case was page eight ninety-six. It's in the, it's in the submissions that you have. And I'm quoting from the case, that forfeitures are considered harsh exactions. That's the argument that you're hearing, that you should err on the side of your client, because forfeitures are harsh. And I agree, they are harsh, but they are required by law. And what counsel didn't point out to you is page eight ninety-six in Worsaw is actually Judge Cope's decision, and Judge Cope is dissenting. Let me explain what that means real quick. I won't make a big deal of it. But when you cite an opinion, you cite the majority opinion. And Worsaw loses, his wife, Karen Worsaw loses. Judge Cope, who was cited by learned counsel, deciding the dissent. The dissent is a part of the decision, which is the losing side of the case. So it's fine to cite a dissent, but in a perfect world, you point out it's a dissent. It's Cope who was not in the majority. And the case was not appealed and it was not reversed, so Cope was wrong with regard to his dissenting opinion. And what Worsaw held was that the wife does not get any pension. There is no innocent spouse exception. The wife unfortunately is cut off, and I described to you that the case law, and there are lots of these cases where people try to say this is not fair to an innocent spouse. It's ex post facto law, that it's an, it's a very harsh punitive kind of a decision, but that's what the cases are. And I might agree with you that it's harsh, but the solution is to go to the Florida Legislature and tell the Florida Legislature to look out for the interests of innocent spouses, which has been done in other states, but is not the law in Florida. I'm not going to rehash the testimony across, but I do want trustees to think through what you've heard. I want you to think through what you believe, and at the end of the day, it's not that important. But the record establishes that the mother was expelled or removed from the ALS after the power of attorney was entered and after all the money was paid, the seven hundred thousand plus, which was no accident. And that's the reason why the brother comes forward, trustees, because the brother's no longer listed on the power of attorney, which had legal consequences. And by, the last thing I'm going to point out is I want to go back to the, the two offenses that now you're very familiar with, eight thirty-one oh two and eight twenty-five one oh three. Eight thirty-one is uttering forged information. And I pointed out at the very beginning that eight thirty-one oh two has a knowledge, willfulness requirement, if you will, in the statute. So it's not just passing on a falsified or forged or incorrect document. That's not uttering. Uttering requires, and I'm going to read it again, whoever utters and publishes as true a false, forged, or altered record, et cetera, et cetera, knowing the same to be false with intent to injure or defraud any person. In other words, the uttering statute has a component to it. It includes intent to injure or defraud a person. That gets you the willfulness when you plead no contest to eight thirty-one one oh two. And you saw that statute in the arrest affidavit, you saw that statute in the information, the charging document, and you saw it on the plea, and it's a felony. The other statute was eight twenty-five one oh three, and it's the same argument that exploiting the elderly is not just stealing money from the elderly. Exploiting the elderly requires, and I'm going to read the statute, knowingly, the knowledge requirement, knowingly obtaining or using or endeavoring to obtain or use an elderly person or disabled person's funds, assets, or property with intent to temporarily or permanently deprive the elderly person. And then it has other requirements that you have to stand in the position of trust or confidence, or have a business relationship, or you can take advantage of the elderly, which by pleading no contest to that offense, eight twenty-five one oh three, you have pled no contest, that you are agreeing that that's exactly what happened, taking advantage of the elderly knowingly, with intent to deprive them temporarily or permanently. And that's the last word I want to focus on, temporarily or permanently. The fact that two thousand seventeen is when the power of attorney, we think was signed, according to the testimony. The fact that 2017 is when the power of attorney, we think, was signed, according to the testimony. But the restitution isn't until 2021. That four-year difference is irrelevant for purposes of the forfeiture statute, because the criminal offense is taking the property with intent temporarily or permanently. And I'll give the example, and I'm going to finish. And I say it seriously. If there's a bank robbery, there is no defense to a bank robbery to turn around, go back to the bank and try to give back the money. That is not a defense to bank robbery, trustees. This is not an easy case from the standpoint of forfeiting a benefit. It's not what you signed up for. It is what the law requires. When the facts are clear and established, and the law is clear, there really is no dispute over what the law says. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you for your time today.
Any questions at all? Any more input before? Do you feel the need for me to summarize, or you have something?
Yeah, I got a question. When he was getting, when Steve was getting his notary done, was it done in the lobby or actually behind the desk?
Testimony from Solana, and I can get you the page sites, and I'll do that. It's at her desk. She kept the notary seal in her desk, and the notarization occurred, according to Solana's testimony, at her desk. The only two people that were there is, you should have had, the two witnesses and the principals. Normally, a real estate deed, you have to have two witnesses, you have to have the person signing and a notary. But here, there were no separate witnesses on the power of attorney. And the only people on both occasions for the two documents were the respondent and the notary. No witnesses, nobody else, just the two of them at the desk. Notary seal kept in the desk, and I'm going to give you the sites, if you give me a minute.
While you're doing it, any other comments?
I just wanted to clarify on a point that Mr. Carter had brought up earlier in here. I wanted to clarify.
You need to talk where the recorder is.
I'm pretty loud. I thought I could swing it.
I can tell you, because I sometimes attend remotely.
Okay, fair enough. I just wanted to touch on what you were talking about earlier, and felt the need to kind of clarify with regards to the conviction portion that you had brought up again. The actual portion of the statute states that any public officer or employee who is convicted of a specified offense committed prior to retirement or whose office or employment is terminated by reason of, is her admitted commission aid or abetment of special offense or specified offense shall forfeit all rights and benefits under the public retirement system, of which he or she is a member. It's also in the 54-129. I just wanted to clarify that you're, I understand your sticking point of conviction, but the conviction must be that of a specified offense. It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not separate. I don't know if I made myself clear enough earlier, so I wanted to be very specific about that. Just because conviction is defined in the definitions, the forfeiture, which is subsection, which is three there, about halfway down the pair, towards the bottom of the page, it states that the conviction must be that of a specified offense. I just wanted to make sure that I clarified that for your benefit. And again, that's also contained within 54-129, which I was wanting to reiterate as well. 54-129, it's in Section 2, grounds for forfeiture.
If you go back up to the convictions definition, it includes a plea of guilty or of no love. So again, I still think my point stands, unfortunately.
And like I said, I wanted to clarify, though, that the conviction must be that of a specified offense, not necessarily simply be.
I think through this entire hearing, we've been talking about specified offense number six.
And I agree with you, but I wanted to clarify for your benefit, in case I hadn't made myself clear earlier. The conviction must be that of a specified offense, rather than just simply taking the definition conviction, which is the plea. I wanted to make that more.
Yeah, and again, just because I don't know where this is being lost. The specified offense we're considering is specified offense number six.
I agree with you. I understand what you're saying. I wanted to make more clear the fact that Section 3, the forfeiture, actually specifically requires this. This is because you had indicated the conviction. I wasn't sure if you were clear on that being only the definition or whether or not it required both. So I wanted to make that more clear.
I'm not giving any more argument. I just wanted to give the promised page sites. So this is Exhibit 20 for the record, which is the Solana deposition. Page 10, lines 16 to 18, that the notarization of the DPOA was done on duty at Solana's desk. Page 10, lines 19 through 20, Solana keeps her notary stamp at her desk. Page 13 of Exhibit 20, the Solana deposition, lines 12 to 15, the notarization of the warranty deed. So Page 10 was the DPOA done on duty at Solana's desk. But the notarization of the warranty deed, Page 13, line 12 to 15, was also done on duty at Solana's desk.
Any other questions, comments? Does the board need me to summarize the proceedings here? Are you ready to? Ready to confer about it? Quickly, if you could, the basis of the arguments are that nexus. Arguments is that they're nexus, and we're under the catch-all, quote unquote. No nexus, no forfeiture. That's it in a nutshell. That's pretty much what you've been hearing. You hear one side supporting, there is a nexus, and one side saying, nexus is questionable. So you're ready to go, unless you have specific questions. Up to you. You want to discuss it among yourselves, you certainly have that opportunity. Now, what's in front of you, if it's hearing, you can make a motion to deny the forfeiture or move forward with the forfeiture. If you approve the forfeiture, I will then have to write a final order on this, on your action, and it will be published and so forth. I would like you to do one thing, a motion to accept the stipulations as presented. I don't think we did that. I know you said you're submitting them, but I don't think we ever made a motion to accept them. I'd like to see that done before you make a claim. All right, so do I have someone who will make a motion to accept the stipulations as presented?
Do I have a second? To be clear, that also includes the exhibits.
Exhibit, correct, yes. I'll second. Does anybody want to make a motion, or do you want to have discussion, or how do you? I can't, I can't make. If you want to deliberate, we're going to do it in public, just so everybody's aware. Yeah, I was asked that question earlier. This is always a public meeting. You're going to have to discuss it. Because he's on duty in the back room. Did you hear that? Yeah, because it was done in the office at her desk, not at the front desk on duty. That's the nexus. Yeah, way around that, unfortunately. Yeah, I see a nexus there. I agree. I'm sorry. I agree the nexus is there. So then I am going to have to ask for a motion to proceed with it. I made the motion, let's see. Do I have a second? I will second that motion. Any made the motion? Second. I did, sir. All in favor? Aye. Aye. And I'll prepare a final order. Give that to you as soon as I can.
Sweets, I think there's a collateral legal issue. I don't want to make any arguments, but I think it's appropriate for the board to discuss it.
Yeah, I was just going to address that issue that I am.
He was just answering me the same question.
Yes.
If you want to address it, please do.
So now that the decision has been made with respect to the forfeiture, it begs the question whether or not you thought our argument had merit and with respect to Kim Braddock's ability to continue to receive 25% of her pension and 25% of his pension. And, you know, I just have to, again, I like our argument. I think it's good. I really do. I think special counsel was particularly persuasive with respect to the Stephen Braddock side of the argument, and less persuasive with respect to Kim Braddock's side, because there isn't anything there. There's, there's, there is a, you know, that, there's an opinion that, well, if he doesn't get it, then you don't get it. But there's no case law that makes the argument that she makes. And so we would respectfully ask the board to take under consideration her ability to continue to receive her share of that pension, even in light of the fact that his apparently looks like it's going to be forfeited.
Tell you, my position, I think it's a great argument. However, I think the statute is very clear that it says it must be forfeited. All of it. And that she unfortunately is derivative of Steve getting it. But I think it's certainly something that I expect there will be an appeal, and it would certainly be something that I would.
Well, and I agree with you that it does say that if he forfeits, he forfeits. But there's no language in there that says the spouse does. There are circuit court cases and federal cases that find differently. And obviously, we've hashed those out pretty thoroughly.
We're just going to have to refer to the appellate court.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
I think, yeah, given that you allow the interview, take a motion. How do you want us to order it? So I would say this, make a motion finding that she has no standing in this matter. Do I have a motion for such? I'll take comments.
Okay, listen, she does have standing because she was permitted to intervene. Maybe, pardon me, I don't need to overstep, but perhaps the motion should be, if that's how you see it, that she's, she doesn't have the right to continue to receive 25% of the pension.
I'm okay with that, ma'am.
Because her right is derivative. At least in your eyes, not mine.
That would be the motion. So the motion would be that she would be ineligible for the 25% of the pension because it is derivative from Steve. That would be the motion. We'll make the motion against him. Do I have a second? We'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
That was Drew.
She brought him into motion, and Drew's second. Okay, that concludes the business before the board of the special meeting for this hearing. Thank everybody for attending. What was the saying? We, yeah, do we have any public comment? Then a motion to adjourn? A motion to adjourn? No, a second? Everybody second, all in favor? Okay.